Good afternoon. I'd like to call the Santa Barbara City Council meeting of July 11th, 2017, to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dominguez.
Here.
Councilmember Rouse.
Here.
Councilmember Hart.
Here.
Councilmember Mario.
Here.
Mayor Schneider.
Here.
Item number one.
Item one, subject: Employee Recognizations Service Award Pins.
Thank you, Mr. Casey.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. As you know, each month, we like to recognize employees for achieving certain milestones with their service to the city. I'd like to read some names to the record in recognition of their service. There are no one here today to receive their pins in person. With five years of service, Nels Anderson, Maintenance Supervisor Two with the Waterfront Department; Amanda Henderson, Administrative Analyst Two, Parks and Recreation Department; and Jessica Martinez, Administrative Specialist, Parks and Recreation Department. With ten years of service to the city, Cameron Benson, Creeks Restoration Clean Water Manager, Parks and Recreation Department; Brian DeMore, City Engineer, Public Works Department; Jim Dewey, Streets Operations and Infrastructure Manager, Public Works Department; Isenia Gomez, Human Resources Assistant, Administrative Services Department; Daniel Gullett, Supervising Transportation Planner, Public Works Department; and Jose Zarate, Streets Maintenance Worker Two with the Public Works Department. With twenty years of service to the city, Stephen Corral, Water/Wastewater Maintenance Planner/S scheduler, Public Works Department; Bob Kendall, Fire Captain, Fire Department; Rob Oshiro, Fire Engineer, Fire Department; and Joe Tiso, Fire Captain, with the Fire Department. And with thirty years of service to the city, Jose Yanaes, Accounting Assistant, with the Finance Department.
Great, well, congratulations to everyone. Any changes to the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
No? Okay, so, public comment, we have two minutes up at the podium. We'll start with Clint Orr to be followed by Scott Ruskamp.
Good afternoon, Mayor Schneider and Councilmembers. Of course, I'm Clint Orr. As you know, I'm concerned about North Hollister with the airport authorities, what they're doing with it. I think it should be visitor-serving commercial, that's what they have in Huntington Beach in their prime properties. That's maybe the most valuable property in the whole county. It's served by rail, it's served by plane, it's served by bus. I'm concerned about it being light industrial, so you're gonna put Jiffy Lubes in there and people are gonna fly in from Nashville magically to a Jiffy Lube. I think you should rezone that or think about visitor-serving commercial. I'm moving forward, I'll rent a folding big box over in Galita and skip the red tape, should have that open, I would think, by the end of the year. I'm also concerned about Coast Village Maintenance, I've said it for a long time. The water's been off about five years and, yeah, I know, it's a big water shortage, but, you know, you charge people three to ten bucks a foot on the rents and you don't maintain the median, I think that's wrong. The lights have been broken there for five years, there's five lights right there in front of Starbucks, I brought it up in 2015, I brought it up in 2016, now I'm bringing it up in 2017. So, I would like to see the water turned on, I'd like to see a little bit of weed and feed in there, and I think that it should look like the entry to Montecito and not like a third-world country. Thanks.
Scott Ruskamp and then Lee Muldaver. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Scott Ruskamp. I'm part of a group called Equity for SB. A few weeks ago, one of my colleagues was here to talk about modernizing the Santa Barbara Police Department's use-of-force policy. Equity for SB has held a public event to help involve the community in the process of updating the use-of-force policy, and as my colleague reported, we've made a list of requests to update the SBPD use-of-force policy. We sent these requests to the SBPD on June 6th. You can find them on the Facebook page Equity for SB. The list of requests mentions the many sources recommending the policies the Equity for SB studied for months, and the feedback we've received from the community about the requests has been widely supportive. We haven't received any feedback from the SBPD about our requests yet, but we are looking forward to collaborating with them further as we continue to pursue our common goal of giving all stakeholders a voice as this crucial policy is updated. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Muldaver.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Lee Muldaver, speaking on behalf of the Citizens Planning Association of Santa Barbara County, fifty-seven years young and growing. And I wanted to take this moment before you all focus for the rest of the afternoon on the NZO and all the related issues, to the fact that a few days from now, one of the people who's been working behind the scenes and publicly here with you for a long, long time, Jaime Lamon, although it seems like he just got here, is about to take premature early retirement, and I think he may be the senior person in community development with continuous service. And as he's joked, he's probably been here for more appeals with more city attorney hours than anyone else on your staff combined. Now, the Planning Association, being very, very interested in design and public process, has worked with and beside and sometimes against Mr. Lamon for most of his career here, and we've come to respect and value the level of commitment to community and law and process and good design that he's always tried to bring forward even when we didn't individually agree. And I think, as I listen to Mr. Casey read the list of people who spent their careers here in public service, you realize that although he's been here longer, he's not the exception. And as the Vice Chair for Creeks and Watersheds, hearing that Cameron Benson's at ten years, I was thinking, we are so lucky with the cost of housing that we're still able to attract people of the quality of Jaime Lamon or Cameron Benson or any of the people on Mr. Casey's list. So, I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Lamon in advance, so he's not forgotten in the NZO or later on, and to all the people who have won their seniority recognition today. Thank you.
Thank you, well said. Okay, that concludes public comment. Onto the consent calendar, there's some items to read.
Item two, subject: Adoption of an Ordinance to Sell Exclusive Right to Repurchase 420 East De La Gara Street Presidio Park Apartments. Recommendation: That council adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving the sale of the exclusive right to repurchase property located at 420 East De La Gara Street to Presidio Park LP for the amount of $12,029,200. Approving a loan to Presidio Park LP in the amount of $11,197,900 secured by a first deed of trust recorded on the property. Approving an affordability control covenant imposed on real property and authorizing the Community Development Director to execute such agreements and related documents as necessary. Item three, subject: Introduction of Ordinance Establishing Speed Limits. Recommendation: That council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Chapter 10.60 of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code by revising Section 10.60.015 and establishing prima facia speed limits on certain portions of the Creo Street, Fairview Avenue, Gutierrez Street, Sammerton Drive, and San Pasqual Street, and Santa Barbara Street. Item four, subject: Introduction of Ordinance for Second Amendment to First-Class Concessions Food and Beverage Agreement at the Airport. Recommendation: That council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving and authorizing the airport director to execute a second amendment to the concession agreement 23445 with First Class Concessions, a California corporation, amending the term and midterm refurbishment provisions to extend the expiration by five years to August 31st, 2026, and add a requirement for rebranding of the airline terminal full-service restaurant at Santa Barbara Airport as well as update language required by the Federal Aviation Administration regarding persons with disabilities. Item five, subject: Resolution for Acceptance of Easements at 311 West De La Gara Street for the De La Gara Street Bridge Replacement Project. Recommendation: That council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara to acquire and accept permanent and temporary construction easements located at 311 West De La Gara Street and authorizing the city administrator to execute the purchase agreement and related documents as necessary in a form approved by the city attorney.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. There's a speaker slip for item fourteen, any other items to pull on consent? Okay, could you read item fourteen, please?
Item fourteen, subject: Agreement with Santa Barbara County Sheriff's Department to Provide for Additional Law Enforcement Services at Special Events.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Item fourteen, the authorization of a peak loading contract with the Sheriff's Department is great. Mr. Barden in the news press, from Montecito, in the news press on the Sunday's Voice, got trapped in the peak loading on Cabrillo during the Fourth of July, and he said it was a nightmare. Fortunately, I walked down earlier and I have the ability to walk probably fifteen to twenty minutes to get all the way down to Sambo's. I support local businesses to the nth degree. It was already at 1:30 lined all the way up with the shelter, shade tents or whatever, people, packed people all the way from the East Beach bathhouse to, I'm sure, up on Shoreline. It was just amazing, and I don't ever remember that except the packing on the beach when people dug pits on leadbetter, and, you know? In this case, Mr. Barden mentions the motorcycle officers showed up and then disappeared. I don't know why they turned around, but maybe it's something in how this whole thing was scripted, the letter. But, the officers have a very, very difficult job, and there's a lot of people that come in from out of town that are not that familiar with the roads, and if they had the sheriffs there during the Amgen Bike Race kickoff and then thereafter, I think my whole problem with the barricade that hadn't been picked up and, you know, dealing with an officer that probably had a very, very rough day earlier on in the day during the actual race kickoff, it never would've occurred, but, so it's good to see some extra support when it's needed during events, and the rest of the story I'll tell to the judge Tuesday. Take care.
Thank you. Okay, that's it for, is there a motion for the consent calendar?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Sir.
Moved by Mario, seconded by Hotchkiss, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. Go ahead, Mr. Dominguez.
I just have one comment for staff with regards to items nine and 10. These are for contract services for plan review activity, and it says that we rely on them when the capacity of our in-house staff is exceeded by 100%. So I'm wondering if staff thinks it may be beneficial in the future to drop that percentage, because I'm not sure if I read this as if we have 100% more than we can handle, but I would just invite staff at their earliest possible doubt that they think they're being overwhelmed that they come back to council on this.
Okay. So, we concluded the consent calendar, onto item number 16.
Item 16, subject: Final Pre-Enforcement Status Report Proposed Amendments to Oversized Vehicle Parking Ordinance and Related Fee Resolution. Recommendation: That council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Section 10.44.220 of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code with respect to restriction of oversized vehicle parking, and that council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Resolution Number 17058 to adopt new and revised downtown parking fees, including fees for oversized vehicle parking permits.
Thank you. Mr. Kwon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to present the report today, but the work represents a lot of effort by a number of people, some of whom are here, some are not. The folks that are here include Derek Bailey, who is your Principal Transportation Engineer, Rob Dayton, Derek's boss, I guess? Victor Garza from Downtown Parking, not here is Sarah Clark from Downtown Parking, who put a lot of effort into this. Captain Marazita is also here from the Police Department. Sergeant Juanita Smith put quite a bit of effort into this work as well. So with that as an introduction, Derek, will you get the presentation up and then I can drive it from here, I think?
The history of the ordinance, I'm going to limit to just since the ordinance was enacted last fall. As you will recall, these revisions go back to the fall of 2015, when a council colleague's memo initiated a new look at what was then a recreational vehicle parking ordinance that allowed the city to post no RV parking signs around schools and churches and other land uses, I think, thought to be sensitive land uses. So the ordinance became effective in mid-December 2016, but the ordinance couldn't be enforced immediately for a number of reasons. First, the old no RV parking signs that were posted on every blockface where that ordinance was enforced had to be removed. Second, we needed new signage. You'll recall that Mr. Bailey came up with what I think is a very effective and novel approach to signposting, so that rather than posting every blockface, about 270 locations were set up, which I visualize as concentric rings, so that as you went into the city, it would be impossible not to pass at least one or more citywide no-oversized-vehicle signs. Next, Downtown Parking wants to manage the permit processes online to the greatest extent possible, so they've been working on a database that will allow that. They will not be taking payments for the permits online at this time down the road that could happen. Finally, the ordinance did something that I hope we will repeat in other police-power-based laws that you may enact, and that is it authorized the Public Works Director to issue implementing and interpretive rules and regulations. Many times with these ordinances, particularly ordinances that cover new ground, issues come up that you simply can't anticipate, and authorizing an administrative official to produce regulations can help smooth over a lot of those issues. And you'll see later on that we've used that power with the proposed rules and regulations. Okay, on a parallel path, when the council enacted the ordinance, it also created an ad hoc stakeholders committee, and that committee was concerned with the impacts of people who live in vehicles, oversized vehicles, and that process came to you in May and again in June. Some off-street daytime spaces were identified, and the council has entered into a contract with New Beginnings, which would pay for management of up to 40 additional spaces. That is, as I said, a parallel path, but I wanted to bring it to your attention. Let's talk about what the rules are in the ordinance as it stands today. It creates three dimension limitations: width, height, and length. As you can see from the slide, those figures are relatively large, and I say relatively because some cities use different sizes. These were selected from neighboring cities and nearby cities and are, if not typical, at least within the bounds of what other places are doing. The ordinance creates what I would call short-term exceptions, and these are for commercial deliveries. It's short-term because the parking for deliveries is allowed for 30-minute spans. Likewise, emergency repairs to a broken-down, oversized vehicle are allowed, and that's a four-hour timeframe. And finally, buses are allowed to park for up to two hours, and in addition, the city can identify specific bus parking areas. That was a nod not only to public vehicles but to tour buses and other kinds of transport. There are medium-term permits available for businesses, residents, and visitors. Medium-term in this context means up to five days, extendable to 10 days in any 90-day period. That particular permitting process drew quite a bit of attention during the implementation period that we've just been through, and we'll talk about it more. There are long-term permits available only for people with disabilities in the existing ordinance, meaning that people with disabilities who have an oversized vehicle that is necessary to accommodate the disability can get annual permits. Those permits will be issued without charge. Finally, the ordinance excludes a number of vehicles altogether, including government vehicles and utilities, emergency vehicles. And secondly, it excludes pickup trucks that meet the height and length but don't meet the width. That's an important exclusion in the context of the public comment we heard after the ordinance was implemented, because that pickup truck exception really was a nod to contractors and other businesspeople who had the need to go from address to address to serve their So I mentioned the public meeting. During the implementation period, it became pretty clear that it would be appropriate to test the ordinance and regulations with the public and really do an error check or a misconception check. So we did that on May 10th. We had a modest turnout, I would say, with 24 people speaking and about 35 in attendance. The concerns expressed at that meeting included specifically sprinters or high-profile vehicles, concerns expressed by homeless advocates about the residents of RVs who live on the streets, commercial businesses concerned about permitting, and of course, neighborhood associations concerned about the impact of oversized vehicles that park, for lack of a better word, chronically in the city's neighborhoods. I've tried to summarize both in the staff report and in the slide presentation what we heard the public saying during that meeting and in the period after the ordinance was enacted up till now. First, the argument relating to high-profile vehicles was that they are designed, the Mercedes certainly is a European-designed vehicle, and it's meant for narrow European streets, and the analogy can be drawn to Santa Barbara with its narrow streets, so why not allow them? Secondly, the proposal was made to amend the ordinance so that it would apply to vehicles that did not meet two out of three of the requirements. That came directly from the Sprinter representatives, because sprinters have the characteristic of being too tall for the ordinance, not necessarily too long, and not necessarily too wide. So at 80 inches, they're right up against the width limit of the ordinance. In addition, people argued that high-profile vehicles are useful for transporting bicycles, kayaks, paddleboards, surfboards, and that in an outdoors-oriented community like Santa Barbara, we should be, the city should be promoting rather than discouraging the use of those vehicles. Next, Cox Communications came forward fairly early on and identified their use of high-profile vehicles and how they would be affected. You'll recall that the exclusion in the ordinance applies to public utilities. Cox was concerned that they are not a public utility, therefore, would they be allowed to continue operating? In addition, Cox raised the issue of take-home vehicles, and my discussions with them, my understanding is that they have somewhere between 10 and 15 vehicles that they send home with workers on a daily basis. While we may not think of television in terms of emergency response, Cox does provide telephone service, and there may be times when they need to respond after hours for maintenance or repair of telephone systems. We also heard from commercial interests that I'm calling contractors, not to limit the concern to building or general contractors, but to identify people who go from site to site doing work on either buildings or other kinds of facilities using larger vehicles. As I mentioned, that pickup truck exclusion was argued by the members of the public commenting that it was dated, that it was based on the use of a kind of vehicle that's kind of fallen out of favor with contractors. There's an advantage in using an enclosed vehicle to store expensive equipment. The diesel, high-profile vehicles are relatively fuel-efficient, and they seem to be coming into greater usage. Finally, we heard that the ordinance as written would interfere with news reporting. We can all imagine those larger vans with antennas and other equipment that are used for news reporting, so we heard about that as well. Let's talk about high-profile vehicles in a little bit more detail. Sprinters are taller than the 82 inches allowed under the existing ordinance, but they do meet the width and the length requirement, although some versions of the sprinters are very close to the 25 feet or 300 inches, getting as big as 290 inches. So you can see that the size range of sprinters ranges from just barely too tall to substantially too tall, and not too long to very close to being too long, but the width is in general acceptable with sprinters. Keep in mind that gross vehicle weight figure, the range of 8,550 pounds to 11,030 pounds, because that becomes important with work the Police Department did in response to the council's request for some quantification about what's going on out there. One of the problems that we ran into looking at the Sprinter question is that all high-profile vehicles are not alike, and the effect of creating a two-out-of-three requirement would be to exclude domestic high-profile vehicles. The Ford and Ram or Dodge Ram products exceed the width limitation in the ordinance, and they are in wide usage as well. I did not analyze the length or height of those particular vehicles, but I assume they're in a range similar to the sprinters. but I assume they're in a range similar to the sprinters. Now, height and width do remain key safety concerns. Attached to your staff report are a number of documents prepared by Mr. Bailey that address why height and width are important. One of the very sharp criticisms we heard on May 10th was that the city had no quantifiable information about how oversized vehicles contribute to collision risks. So Mr. Bailey prepared a very detailed examination explaining why his concern remains that oversized vehicles do contribute to collision risks, and that's in your packet. So the other concern that Mr. Bailey addresses in your attachments is traffic control device visibility. And going back to those narrow European streets, what we understand, and by "we," I mean Mr. Bailey, as he's explained it to the rest of us, is that European cities typically have far fewer traffic control devices than we in America, North America, come to expect. Meaning European drivers are less reliant on signs or signals to drive safely. We generally, as drivers, have an expectation that when there's a dangerous condition or a need to stop, you'll see a sign. So maintaining visibility of those traffic control devices is particularly important. I mentioned the heightened risk of collisions. That's explained in the packet. Part of the reason is encroachment into the travel lane width, pretty obvious that a wide vehicle. When you add, as Mr. Bailey has, the 18 inches from the curb that you're allowed to park, 18 inches plus 80 inches is very close to the width we have for our parking lanes. And he can explain that more. One of the bits of new learning is, for me, was that just posting the signs at a higher level doesn't really work well because what happens is that at nighttime, your headlights don't go up to meet the sign height. So that picture on the right there shows a, it's a Sprinter. It's got a, I think it's got a ladder on the right side, and it's got a roof rack. Immediately behind it, you see a white rectangle projecting up. That's a street sign that street crews had elevated to 10 feet. That sign is effectively invisible at night because your headlights don't go up that high. Mr. Bailey has directed the street crews not to exceed, I believe, eight feet with traffic control signs. You'll see those high signs in many locations. I can think of Santa Barbara, on the way up towards Mission, there's a, maybe it's at Mission, there's an extremely tall, bent sign at this point. So that was new learning for us that came up after the May meeting. Now, in terms of parking, sprinters in particular, or high-profile vehicles, there's a significant amount of downtown off-street parking that is paid for either directly by the city or through the parking districts. What is not perhaps commonly understood is that eight of those 14 or so lots are available for oversized vehicles up to 22 feet. Read, most sprinters can park in those lots. So there's quite a bit of off-street parking available, should the ordinance go into effect, and impact the use of non-commercial Sprinter drivers, or Ford or Dodge drivers for that matter. Now, in terms of quantification, the Department of Motor Vehicles data shows that county-wide vehicle registrations at the end of 2014, they're up in the 400-something-thousand range. So this 84,000 number is a straight population extrapolation based on the size of Santa Barbara in comparison to the county. We're about 21 or so percent of the county's population, maybe a little less now with the growth in the North County. And we can use that to determine that, believe it or not, there is almost one vehicle for every person in Santa Barbara. So there are 84,000 vehicles registered in Santa Barbara. The police undertook to try and understand how many high-profile vehicles they were, and they, there are. And they did that by defining a particular query that the Department of Vehicles, Department of Motor Vehicles ran using their database. And I say it that way because it takes custom programming. It took time to do. The DMV comped us on this one, but they wouldn't again. Essentially, what the police asked for were all of the Dodge, Ford, Freightliner, and Mercedes vans with a gross vehicle weight between 8,550 and 11,030 pounds. What the DMV came back with is a range that matches that, but not perfectly. Their categories ran from 8,500 to, oh, 10 or so thousand, it's in the staff report, and then capped out at 14,000. So looking at that broader range of figures, we know that there are about 1,000 high-profile vehicles. We're not sure that all of those are sprinters. We're not sure that all of those are within that 8,550 to 11,030-pound range. But it gives you a pretty good sense of how many of them are out there. It's about 1.3% of all vehicles in town, or 6% of all the trucks in town.
Excuse me, Mr. Kulan, is that both commercial and private?
Yes. And I offer those facts with no judgment whatsoever. What that means is up to you and the community to determine. So there are a series of responses that the staff developed after the May 10 meeting. First, with respect to Cox, we use those handy-dandy rules and regulations to include Cox as a public utility. While they are not a public utility in the sense of being regulated by the PUC, they are identified in the Public Utilities Code as a form of operation. And so it wasn't a long reach to identify them as a public utility. So they would be excluded from any permitting or any violations of the ordinance. What the regulations do, though, is recognize that, for the most part, public utilities are operating during daylight hours. So the 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. limitations you see up there are drawn directly from your recently updated noise ordinance. And it allows unrestricted free-rein parking for Cox and every other public utility from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. It does allow after-hours work as well. And the two words up there in quotes, "necessary in emergency," are very important. We started down the path of looking at an exception for after-hours emergencies for utilities and for Cox. Again, trying to be as focused as we could, but still meet the needs that have been expressed. The utility companies and Cox identified planned nighttime work as something that happens not infrequently. Edison, for example, on Korea, or around town doing nighttime projects to avoid customer inconvenience by shutting down power. So in addition to emergency conditions, we identified necessary work. So what that means is that Cox or any other entity defined as a utility can operate after 8:00 p.m. when it's necessary work. We're not trying to interfere or direct their scheduling of how they do their business. We're trying to completely be hands-off during the 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. hours, but later on in the night requires some rationale for them being there. How that will be enforced is that the rules and regulations anticipate that emergency services will put a piece of paper up in their windshield that says, "I'm at such-and-such address dealing with it." So it's not very burdensome. We did consider Cox's request about take-home vehicles. And in all candor, we couldn't find a rationale that distinguished Cox well-marked sprinters from a homeless guy in an RV. I simply don't know how to distinguish that, those two kinds of vehicles. I put it in the staff report in that context that if you wish to distinguish take-home parking for utility vehicles at night, you need to identify some rationale that we can use to explain to a court why the city is doing what it's doing. Now, the complaint about the pickup truck exclusion and the impact on contractors stuck. When we looked at the ordinance, it was clear that that exclusion was meant to minimize the impact of the ordinance on businesses. The purpose of these ordinances is not to interfere with commerce. It's to protect safe passage and travel on the streets to the greatest extent you can in a reasonable way. So what the staff concluded, and what is in your packet today, is a proposed amendment to the original ordinance. And that amendment creates an annual commercial permit. That permit will require a business license. One license may have several vehicles associated with it. I know that I'd heard from one of the contractors concerned that that permit system wouldn't work if he or she had multiple vehicles. That's not the case. One business license can support many vehicles, provided they're necessary and actually in use by the business. The other safety requirement that is built into all of these permits is that, I put it affirmatively on the slide, that they have to be parked in a safe location. In the regulations, that's really translated into you can't park in a location that creates or exacerbates a dangerous traffic safety condition. Mr. Bailey has defined that term in the regulations. So the basic theme here is that no one can park a big vehicle anytime in a location that is, creates a dangerous traffic safety condition, barring pure emergency vehicle response. And likewise, the contractor-commercial annual permit does not allow take-home overnight parking on the streets. It does allow parking to respond to health and safety emergencies at a job site. That is different from the utility permit, or, excuse me, the utility exclusion because it doesn't include the term "necessary." What that piece of the ordinance is trying to say is that if you're a contractor working on a project and something blows up in the middle of the night, you can go take care of it. Let's say a pipe breaks, or there's an electrical fire. It would be irrational not to allow them to respond late in the evening to correct the situation that everyone wants corrected. So that's the proposed amendment. In addition, we created another exclusion by expanding the utility exclusion to include specialized vehicles actively engaged in news reporting. And that language, I think, does the job that that community was interested in having done. Finally, in terms of fees, the staff is proposing what I think is a nominal fee for residents, businesses, and visitors of $5 per day. That's based on a couple of things. We know that fees for permits can't exceed the cost of providing the permit. But in addition, here we're talking about the right to use the public right-of-way for a private purpose. And so, as we learned recently with the Supreme Court in the city's Jack's case, charges for the use of property, such as the franchise fee the city receives from Edison, also have to be reasonably related to the value of what the person is getting. So this $5 a day not only represents a cost-recovery fee, but it also represents some token contribution to the value of that street space that the public generally is contributing for the parking of these oversized vehicles. There'll be no fees for disability permits. I mentioned that already. The contractor's annual permit is set at $650. Because those permits are daytime-only, the staff have the $5 a day fee and multiplied it by the number of working days in a typical year to arrive at the $650 number. The council has a lot of room to adjust that. Now, back to the overnight issue. If the council wants to go that way, we're all going to need to do a lot more work, as I mentioned. In addition, the council has relatively wide flexibility to set the price of any kind of overnight permit system, if you were to create that. So the staff had contemplated substantially higher charges for overnight parking than they did for these permits designed to accommodate businesses, visitors, and residents. That's all I've got. I'm open to questions, as are the colleagues that I worked with on this project.
Great, thank you. Just quickly on that last fee, the $650, that's for all vehicles part of the permit. It's not $650 per vehicle, or is it $650 per vehicle? What was the?
Sure. We were contemplating per-vehicle. We think it's a reasonable charge for a year's worth of parking. But the council has the flexibility to reprice that as it may, as long as it doesn't exceed those parameters.
But the business license is for all the vehicles, and so there's two different things. There's a business license fee for contractors. That's all the vehicles involved with that business. And then, should they need the on-street, then the permit is per-vehicle is what's being recommended?
Yes, but each vehicle doesn't need to have its own business license.
Correct. Okay, got that distinction. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Kulan, the last slide once again as well. The $5 fee per day, is the day a 24-hour day, or is it a daytime-hours day?
Pardon me. It's a 24-hour day because the purpose of those medium-term resident, visitor, and business permits, for the residents, it was designed to allow loading and unloading, or temporary parking on the street, five days, 10, and any 90 days, so that people could load an RV and go on a trip. Or somebody could clean out the RV after a trip. So it's medium-term, but it's anticipating they'll be parked there overnight.
And there'd be a limit to the number of consecutive days then as well? Is that?
For the non-commercial,
Non-commercial.
meaning visitors and residents, it's five days, extendable to 10, and any 90-day period. So during the course of the year, somebody may have 40 days.
Thank you.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Kulan, did I miss your presentation about permits for people with disabilities?
You did not. I gave it last fall. I can repeat it. There is no change to the disability permit process. What the ordinance does is recognize the city's obligations under the Americans with Disabilities Act as interpreted in the most recent Ninth Circuit cases we discussed last fall. And that is, on-street parking is now deemed to be a facility program or service of the city that's subject to the Americans with Disabilities Act. The state law in California also allows for disability placards or plates based on a demonstration that you have a mobility challenge. That's essentially what they're allowed for. State laws, it turns out, also allows a city to call into question the validity of a blue placard or blue plate, should it wish to do so. Looking at the case law around the ADA, it's, in my view, pretty clear that that you want an oversized vehicle and you are disabled does not compel the city to allow that. What the city is compelled to do is allow an oversized vehicle to a person who needs it because of their disability. So imagine a mobility van that's too tall. Imagine even, I spoke to a gentleman who had a pretty compelling case. He has a box truck, but it's specially equipped so that he can roll his wheelchair around and back to make deliveries of the products he manufactures. That's what we're talking about. We're not talking about an RV that has a disabled placard on it because the person needs to take advantage of that parking in a supermarket lot or on-street. The city permit compels a connection between the size of the vehicle and the disability. The case that I'm relying on involved the LA County Law Library, and a gentleman had essentially trash bags of possessions that he argued under the ADA, he should be allowed essentially trash bags of possessions that, he argued, under the ADA, he should be allowed to bring into the library because it was inconvenient for him to leave them on the street while he was in the law library. The federal court said, "No way." If the bags were necessary as a result of your disability, that's one thing, but that you are disabled and you have big bags does not meet the ADA standard.
Okay, so you think what we're proposing is compliant with the ADA?
I do, but my predictive power is not great. This is a developing area, so we will see what creative arguments come up with. I think it has integrity, in the sense that it is meant to accommodate, and it says that clearly. The manner in which that policy or ordinance would be applied will need to be nuanced and careful by staff. Certainly, somebody who has a legitimate need for an oversized vehicle or a specially-equipped vehicle, where the special equipment causes it to be oversized, we're going to want to be very careful to respect their rights.
And regarding the Coastal Commission and its authority related to these changes to the municipal code, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, first of all, the city's existing ordinance is relating to large vehicles along Cabrillo are not being changed. Secondly, the—
You mean the prohibition on RV parking?
Correct. That was a result of a settlement of a lawsuit with Homes on Wheels, where they agreed to that. The second piece is that the Coastal Act does not preclude cities from preventing public nuisances. The ordinance last fall, and at page seven of your packet today, under paragraph G, as in golf, declares oversized vehicle parking to be a public nuisance. That, in my view, takes the regulation out of the Coastal Act and limits the Coastal Commission's authority to direct that. Now, that does not mean that in the context of working through the city's local coastal plan, the commission and commission staff won't want to address how on-street parking rules affect large vehicles. So we're not saying to the Coastal Commission, "We're not willing to talk to you in the context of planning." What we are saying to the Coastal Commission is that it's not feasible and not something that we would accept without opposition to tell us that a dangerous traffic condition can't be remedied within the city, within the coastal zone. We can't be in a position of having civil liability for a dangerous condition without the power to remedy it. And so, to the extent that's the result, would be the result of Coastal Commission policy, I see no choice but to advise you to oppose that.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I have a question for Victor Garza, and I also have a question for someone from the Police Department. So, Mr. Garza, if we could look at Slide 13, and Councilmember Hotchkiss and I were working with the Safe Parking Program, looking for daytime parking spots for people who live in their RVs, and can RVs be accommodated there, Mr. Garza?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Maria, I'm not sure I understand the question. You're asking—
Well, Mr. Colón was saying that large vehicles, or sprinter vans, I think was the context of it, could park in there. Can an RV, can an oversized RV park in there?
Okay, at this time, the lots are all clearly posted that vehicles that exceed 22 feet in length are prohibited from parking in the lots. And that's for circulation purposes. Once a lot's filled up, a vehicle that exceeds 22 feet cannot maneuver safely.
Okay, so—
And the height restrictions are based on the actual clearances in the lots, in the garages.
Okay, so—
Those are posted as well.
Okay, okay, so those are posted. Thank you. And then, the question for the Police Department, thank you, because we're concerned about, I'm concerned, about people who live in their RVs getting a lot of citations related to this new regulation, and then their motor home is towed, and then they're without a home and they're on the street. So a question was given to me is, does the city let the DMV know about citations? Someone was saying that an RV dweller can go get their registration renewed, and they think there are no tickets related to their vehicle, but there are. Can you tell me about that?
Yeah, good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Maria, Captain Marazita from the Police Department. It might be helpful if I maybe describe the process a little bit, maybe that will answer their question completely. We use an automated system that we contract through called the Phoenix System. We leave a waterproof citation on the window of any vehicle that we cite that meets all the California Vehicle Code requirements. That citation allows them 21 days to pay the fine. If we don't receive payment within that 21 days, on the 22nd day, the system automatically sends out a notice to that registered owner at their address that's reported with DMV that gives them an extra 14 days and says, you've been given this citation. So it gives them the opportunity to, again, come to the Police Department and make that payment within that extra 14 days. Now, on the 36th day, so we're talking about 21 days plus the 14th day, on the 36th day, automatically a file is generated and sent to the Department of Motor Vehicles for any overdue citations. The DMV uploads this file into their system, which we believe to be pretty much immediate when they get the file. Now, there is some overlap that can be built in there, because as we know, DMV will send out renewal notices to registered owners for registration prior to their registration being expired. So that's usually about six weeks in advance, plus there's that 36-day window where we haven't actually yet notified the Department of Motor Vehicles. So there can be a, I don't know if delay is the right word, because it's not really a delay, but there is an overlap there, where a citation could be issued and the DMV does not yet know about it.
Okay. So, Captain, can you explain what happens when, how many citations does an RV have to have that they get towed and impounded?
Yes, we use, well, the Vehicle Code requires that there's five outstanding citations before we impound a vehicle for outstanding citations, and that's checked through our computer system, through our parking section, before we tow that vehicle.
So it could be for violating the 72-hour, or parking in the red, or speeding? Like, what are the violations? Just—
So it would be any parking violation. So speeding wouldn't be one of them, but a red zone certainly would be 90-minute zone or a 75-minute zone, et cetera. Not so much the 72-hour section, because typically, if they're in violation of the 72-hour section, we would be towing that vehicle anyway under a different authority section.
Oh, okay, I see. And then, how much does it cost for them to get their vehicle back?
I don't have the exact total for how much that, our release fee is, right in front of me. I'd have to get back to you on that.
And I'm sorry I didn't telegraph that. I sent some questions to the chief this morning, letting her know that I had some questions. So I didn't mean to surprise you with a question, but I'm just asking on behalf of people who live in their RVs. So, thank you. Thank you, Captain. Madam Mayor, I think that's it. I think that's it for now.
Okay. Just on the note of daytime parking spaces, I know the presentation mentioned eight secured. Just to let my colleagues know, I had a meeting with Sue Gray and New Beginnings and another member of the faith community, and it looks like we have definitely another two and potentially another eight on top of that. So that'll go from eight to 18, and so that is still in the works, but, so, that just happened last week, so that number can go up. Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Colón, regarding the differentiation of disability, not anybody with a disability placard would come, be qualified to get a special parking permit. How do we determine that? In other words, how do we adjudicate whether you really need your vehicle, or if you just have one because you have a disability?
Well, Mr. Garza can explain that better than I. In the first instance, it'll be based on the application information that the city receives. In some circumstances, an inspection of a vehicle may be necessary.
So we make, the city will make it an inspection to determine. Victor, is that right?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, if we feel the information that we're being given is accurate, we'll just go with that. If there's a problem later on, then we'll have to do an inspection.
Okay. Last question. Could we make the criteria for a business license commensurate with the cost to charge for the parking license, if I could put it that way? In other words, right now, it's one per business for the business license for numerous trucks. Could it be one per business for the parking permit? In other words, you had six trucks, you'd only pay $650 once.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, if you're concerned about the cost, you can set that wherever you feel it's appropriate. From an enforcement standpoint, it would be important to have permits associated with the specific vehicles. What we'd be concerned about would be misuse of the system, to have permits passed around to who-knows-what kinds of vehicles.
So the permit could be in a sticker form on the windshield, correct, which is readily removed and put on another one?
Yes, Councilmember Hotchkiss, that's our plan, is to issue a sticker that'll be affixed to the vehicle.
Right, like you'd get an annual permit for—
For a resident—
—harbor or whatever.
Right.
Right, okay, that would work. Thank you.
Mr. Dominguez?
Speaking of the harbor, what are the waterfront's policies on parking? Is it also a 22-foot-length limit?
It's my understanding that it's not 22. I don't know the exact length. I'd have to check back—
There's particular RV spaces in harbor lots that are basically two—
Right, and they allow trailers as well.
Exactly. So the length thing shouldn't be a problem in the harbor lots.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, I think we're talking about 20 feet, but the waterfront is dealing with a very different set of concerns about vehicles. They relatively freely give permits for liveaboards and businesses. They're having trouble with vehicles being used as de facto storage boxes, so there are a number of vans parked. They deal with situations where people remove the bumpers to get under the length limitation. So they have a really different set of problems, because the harbor is indeed a commercial enterprise and is meant to support the business that goes around fishing and boating, as well as just the recreational purposes.
And the text we have in front of us, is this the actual text that will be, that will constitute the ordinance, if it goes that way today?
Yes, and we're talking about the unnumbered attachment that follows Mr. Bailey's collision data memo, yes. The rules and regulations may change, because, again, those don't require council approval. What we've put in front of you is our best version. It's actually the second-to-last document. The two final documents are the ordinance and fee resolution in that order.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, we have a number of public comment speaker slips, so we'll start that. We have two minutes here at the podium, and we'll start with Ken Oplinger, to be followed by Jason Tapia.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Ken Oplinger for the Chamber of Commerce. I provided information to you, all of you, on Friday as to the chamber's position on this matter. I just have a couple of things that I want to briefly comment on, especially following the presentation by staff. I do, though, want to start out the same way that I started out my missive to you on Friday. I want you to go back to the direction that was given to staff in November of 2015. In that memo, you specifically talked about the need to come up with an ordinance that responded to the previous RV ordinance and the reasons why you were going through that process. And we have gone from there to an ordinance that now is taking in hundreds of vehicles that have done nothing. These are commercial vehicles, these are folks who are trying to ply their trade in this community, and we are now coming up with a regulatory system that is pulling them in. And I'm not sure that we have a good reason why. Now, you've talked about, through staff, you've talked about the fact that you're also trying to address the issues that surround safety. I'm not sure, I think that there's been some great work about possibilities, but I'm not sure that your original question has been answered. There's been no information provided to you about accidents that have actually been caused by oversized vehicles in this community. And when you compare the level of requirement that you put on neighborhoods who come to you and ask for things to be changed in their neighborhood, a four-way stop, a speed bump, when they come to you, they have to go through and provide you with a rationale for why they want that to happen, that there is not just a potential for a safety issue, but there's actual, there's been an accident. How is it that those folks have a higher threshold they have to cross to get you to respond to the one issue in that neighborhood than what we have now, which is a regulatory system that's been put in place for the entire community? I was the one who also raised the discussion about European design, and I agree with staff that there are certainly a different set of sort of signage, a different set of things that are used in Europe to deal with traffic flow. But the change is that at most four-way intersections, especially in smaller areas like we have here, you don't have stop signs, you have yield signs. So they have the same number of signs, they just control that a little bit differently. So to suggest that because of that different control, that the height issue is not in play there is just not true.
Thank you.
And a number of other things. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dominguez has a question for you, so—
Yes. Or if you don't want to answer it, I can talk to you later, but you started by mentioning November 2015. I wasn't elected then, so I'm taking what you say for granted and as truth, that there may have been a different impetus. But I, when I ran, I talked to a lot of business owners on Milpiss and State, and so I don't know if you've talked to some of the same people, one of their major concerns was the oversized vehicle problem, both because of the safety and blocking parking from their customers. Did you have any of your members bring that up as a point? And I know there are different ways we can structure this, but I'm just curious if safety and the parking availability ever came up.
Parking availability, yes. Safety, no. And in fact, since you mentioned Milpiss, you know, the one piece of information that you were just given on Slide 13 to show that there was a place off-street for larger vehicles to park was only shown in the downtown area. To suggest that that is the only place that we have an issue with oversized vehicles trying to park is just not true. And places like Milpiss, there is a need to be able to park on-street, because there's very little off-street parking. And so there are a number of businesses on there that require, you know, lunchtime crowd. Folks who want to go down to Milpiss and eat at a taqueria, the only place oftentimes they can park is on the street, and we're now essentially telling them that they're not able to do that. So I think in different parts of the city, there are different issues we have to face, but one of them is, there's got to be a place to park these, and just because we have a couple of places downtown to do that doesn't mean everyone has that opportunity.
I was really just asking about the public safety to see if you had any—
It's not something that's been mentioned by any of my members.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Mario also has a question.
Well, I just wanted to give Mr. Oplinger another minute or so, since it seemed like you had a couple of other points to make, sir, and you're representing so many businesses today.
Is there a particular—
You were talking about the European—
Well, I mean, I think I covered that in the comments that were made by staff and just my thoughts on that. The level of proof that we also covered, I think the only other thing that I really wanted to say, and I'll be 15 seconds, is, look, we want you to get rid of this, we want you to start over again. But I also want to make sure that you know that we want to work with you. And I think that there are ways that we can move forward, given the rules that we have in place, making small changes, maybe two out of three. We're happy to have that conversation, but it can't be that every time we come up with a way to try and solve this, we're told, "No." There's got to be a middle ground here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Jason Tapia, be followed by Peter Marin.
Thank you very much for letting me speak today, and I apologize for not knowing the formalities and what to address you as, I assume just the council, so appreciate that. Also, too, I want to express appreciation to Mr. Colón, because he's been very cordial during this entire process in having these discussions with us, and I mean no disrespect from today by what I'm going to say next, but what he did say today does conflict with what I saw come across my desk. So what I'm going to say, as a general contractor in a very small business, what he said today, I believe, is in response to a conversation I had with him. So again, there's no disrespect there. But I would like to see what he said today, make sure that gets into writing if this law, which I feel is a bad law, does go into effect. And that is, that the way it was written up was that an individual needs to have a business license and also needs to then pay the $650 per vehicle per year. The problem with that is that, as a general contractor, I employ tradesmen, artisan craftsmen. Part of their compensation is their vehicle and their tools. Many of— Many of them in this town own oversized vehicles, if that's what you like to call them. And based upon that, they do not have business licenses. It's going to fall on me to pay that $650 per year for my employees who own these oversized vehicles. And again, the way that was written, as received on my desk, is that I would then have to, I guess, pay for business licenses for my employees in order for them to get this permit, and that's how it was worded. Again, I feel like what he said today was in response to our conversation, so I appreciate that. So hopefully, that would go into writing and be very clear that we can't expect employees to go out and get a business license, and that, again, as part of their compensation, they own vehicles which are oftentimes oversized because we cannot work in smaller vehicles. The Sprinter van that I own is the smallest oversized vehicle I've ever owned. The Chevys in the past were much larger. That being said, the $650 per year is extremely expensive. If, at that rate, for my employees and myself, I'll be spending over $2,000 a year in just vehicle permit fees. That's ridiculous, and I cannot pass it on to my clients, it's just it's not possible. And to assume that I'm parking on Santa Barbara city streets on a daily basis at $2.50 an hour, or however this was worded, is also not going to happen. We work in Goleta, we work in Montecito, we work in Hope Ranch, we work in Santa Barbara. So we are here not every single day of the year. There needs to be a better, if this is going to go forward...
Okay, we will, you're past your two minutes, I'll make sure, Mr. Cologne, if you want to answer it now or after public comment?
Yeah, it's very quick, and the, there's more to the municipal code than just this ordinance, and one of the mores is Chapter 1.04.190. It defines person to include entities and businesses. So where this ordinance refers to a person having a business license, it includes corporations and business entities. So I'm not asking you to trust me, is what I'm saying.
Can I say one more quick thing?
We have, two people have questions for you, so why don't we have them ask your question? Go ahead, Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You refer to these folks as employees, but are they not subcontractors?
No, they're employees. Especially by federal criteria...
So you pay their taxes?
Yes, we pay their, we deduct and withhold taxes and all that, all those other items.
And how many employees do you have?
Currently, I have three.
And they all have oversized vehicles?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Dominguez?
What do you think is reasonable about, I agree, $6.50 seems on its face like a high amount, what do you think is the proper price for the public right-of-way?
If somebody told me $6.50 for my entire company per year, I would have to gasp because I'm going to have to basically swallow it and pay that all out of my own pocket, it's not going to go into clients, but at the same time, that would be, you know, somewhat reasonable, it'd be much more nice if it was down with a level...
So about two, something per vehicle?
Two hundred would be reasonable. To pay for my contractor's license, in the state of California, it's $200 a year. I have a business license, which is $100 a year in the city, in Santa Barbara, I believe is about 100. So you go through all the licensing, and suddenly it's going like this, so...
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Peter Marin will be followed by Elaine Lavassar.
My God, they have only two minutes, after all, this is not very much. Anyway, I never thought I'd say this, but I agree 100% with the Chamber of Commerce. Second thing I'd like to say is, this has gotten so complicated with so many changes in it without public notification, that I don't think you could legally pass an ordinance without further discussion. I just don't think you could spring all this on people without proper notification. I heard there was going to be a discussion of the ordinance, but nothing about any of the particulars, and there are people who should be here who are not because they were not adequately notified. Secondly, it costs about $1,600 and up to get a vehicle back when it's towed away. I could break that down for you, $500 towing fee, $100 and up per day storage fee, and $160 police release fee. So once people have paid the tickets for which the vehicle was towed, the indigent and the disabled have no money to get their vehicles back, none. And the one legal thing you've left out of this discussion in relation to this disabled is, on their stipend, which is $900 a month, they cannot afford any other kind of housing in Santa Barbara. So now it gets legally complicated because you are taking away the only housing available to the disabled in Santa Barbara, many of whom have been on the housing waiting list for six years, eight years, sometimes 10 years. So that's an issue which the courts will look at, though you're not looking at. Finally, you will tow the vehicles of the disabled. So now you have disabled people with incomes of $900, unable to work, who are ticketed and then have their only housing towed because of traffic tickets. And I don't think the courts are going to accept that, I don't think you should accept that, and I appear to the consciences of at least the people I know are progressives and liberals not to go forward with this. It's not what the Chamber of Commerce wants, and it's certainly not what the poor in Santa Barbara want or need. Thank you.
Elaine Lavassar will be followed by Deborah Lynch.
Mayor, City Council, thank you. I'm here representing a company I founded that's a small business and the Santa Barbara Contractors Association, of which I've been a member for several decades. I would like to remind you all that every building in this city was built by a contractor. Every building and every house in this entire city is being fixed, repaired, upgraded, and brought to code by licensed contractors. You should not punish our small companies because there's nobody the size of Cox that works in this town. We're all small. We all have to park our vehicles on our properties or get fined. Do not handle the homeless population on the streets, which is a problem, by passing a fee like this and the paperwork that goes with it on our small community. Thank you.
Deborah Lynch will be followed by Martin Lynch.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. I would like to speak as a resident who had her house built by contractors. As I understand it, people can actually use these oversized vehicles with their businesses, they can park on the street, they can use the vehicle while they're working on the project. That's the way I read the ordinance and the regulations, that I did pull up the city's website this week, so there was notice at least from me and anybody who went to the website to look over them. So I understand that they can be used during the day, and it's what happens to them at night when you go home and you park them next to my driveway and I can't see for ingress or egress. And I would like to just note that there are two issues, that I would urge you to please go ahead and accept this with no further exemptions and no further changes, because it's been a long, long road. We have a lot of traffic. Santa Barbara's not growing out, it's just getting thicker. And as we have more and more units, we have more and more traffic, we have more and more impact on our parking, on our small residential streets. We already have very compromised sightlines as it is, and a very hard time, go down anywhere on Chapala and try to cross it on one of the east-west streets, and it's extremely difficult. You really don't, you can't see very well, because I'm assuming these sightlines were done for sedan-sized vehicles. And now, you know, we've got trucks, we've got vans, and now we've got super vans. So I would just like to ask that, you know, it's not asking too much for the residents to have people use these for their business and then go home and park them in their driveway. And if they don't have a driveway, then perhaps they can arrange one of the many lots that you can purchase parking. As far as the fee for contractors, $650 a year to pay for permitting process, I know add-ons are hard for people, but I would think with the Sprinter vans, Mercedes Sprinter vans are $87,000, they might be able to cop up the $650 a year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Martin Lynch will be followed by Kristen McLaughlin.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers...
Excuse me, it's, if you could, we want to hear what everyone else has to say, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Lynch.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, good afternoon. It's been a long, tedious process to get to this point where we have a compromised ordinance, and I just want to thank Mr. Cologne and everybody else that did the hard work to get to this point. I think that this ordinance can significantly improve traffic safety in the city, and I urge its passage and enforcement. Thank you.
Kirsten McLaughlin will be followed by Christopher Voss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. As outlined in our May 8th letter, this ordinance will have negative effects on Cox communications, public safety, local businesses, and the environment. As you know, we provide critical services, internet, phone, television, home security, to residents, businesses, and government entities here in the Santa Barbara area. And while we appreciate the special language in the utility exemption, it's important to note that as a phone company, we are a regulated utility. And contrary to the city attorney's opening statement, utility vehicles are not exempt altogether. While the language related to overnight parking has improved from previous drafts, the time restrictions still impede our ability to respond effectively overnight, putting customers and public safety at risk. By their very nature, these services need to be offered 24 hours a day, every day, and being able to use and park our vehicles 24 hours a day is necessary to our business continuity planning. We're not talking about people watching Gilligan's Island at 2:00 in the morning, we're talking about our ability to support and restore services that enable 911, reverse 911, emergency response, cottage hospital, and all the services that our businesses and government entities use. By staging our assets around our footprint, our technicians can respond immediately and as necessary to outages, natural disasters, and other emergency situations, even when roads are compromised. This is not only needed to support the continuity of Cox's services, but also the continuity efforts of businesses and governments throughout the area. In addition to hurting public safety, as you all saw in our letter, this ordinance would hurt our environmental safety as well. With 14 employees with no access to off-street parking in the city, that results, it would result in an additional 150,000 miles per year driven by our employees just going back and forth between the city and our yard in Goleta. We, like many people in the room, feel our voices have not been completely heard, despite our efforts to work with the city and despite our numerous suggestions of other alternatives, including two of three, exempting commercial vehicles altogether or removing the time restraints of commercial vehicles.
Thank you.
And so we urge you to not move forward with the current proposal.
So let me just ask, because I think it was pretty detailed with the presentation about overnight emergency, when necessary, emergency situations that include, that would include Cox. So give me an example of something that's not working in this ordinance when it comes to the public safety aspect.
So our employees often work overnight, and that, as we talked about, is included in the exemption. However, what's not included is if those employees take a Cox vehicle home to have dinner with their families, take a nap before their call at 1:00 in the morning to work on whatever, a note on a pole or a cabinet on the street. That's just one example.
So it's when they're not actually working, but they might need the vehicle in several hours from that point in time?
Right.
And so you're trying to, in those occasions, which I imagine is not frequent, right?
No, they actually work overnight regularly, weekly.
Right, so the ones who are working, okay, so the 14 individuals who live in the city who don't have a driveway, how often are they working overnight?
Each one?
Yeah.
That's a good question, I'd have to go back and look at that.
Okay.
We have several employees working overnight several days a week in the area. And then we also have on-call on top of that, so folks who have vehicles at home and are on-call to respond to...
How many employees who live in the city have vehicles in their own driveway?
I would have to pull those numbers for you.
Okay, but...
Probably about the same, another 14-ish.
So there's another, there's another group of people who are able to park their vehicle off a city street and are available at night should they need to be?
Yes, in theory.
Okay, thank you. Christopher Voss will be followed by Fred Sweeney.
Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers, my name is Chris Voss, and I'm a commercial fisherman here in Santa Barbara, representing the commercial fishermen of Santa Barbara. We're all small-scale businessmen, that, some of whom have these oversized vehicles that would need to go home and park their vehicle by their, by their house in the evening. So this ordinance, especially with the exceedingly high cost, would be a pretty significant burden on the fishing community. So I recommend that you don't approve it as, as written, and at the very least, please lower the rate, if not, take it to zero, because I could see the need to, to get a permit in order to address this issue, but certainly, a $650 fee is excessive. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred Sweeney will be followed by Natasha Todorovic, and then Elizabeth Wilson, Theo Kracki, and we'll keep going from there.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. Fred Sweeney, representing the Upper East Association and its Board of Directors and its members. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Cologne for continually communicating with our organization and myself to make sure that we were aware of all the meetings and information available. I'd also like to thank Ms. Murillo and the Director of New Beginnings, who we've worked with to try to see if we could solve some of the issues that are in our neighborhood. But I'm here today to tell you that, quite frankly, our neighborhood and our members are done. We're finished. We want action, we want it, we would like it dealt with now. We're supportive of the information that's been presented to you today, and we need to get this thing implemented. I continually, by daily, get emails or phone calls from frustrated residents of the Upper East neighborhood. With regards to the Sprinter van issue, I don't think you're going to find a lot of sympathy with our residents. We have construction projects currently going on Upper Santa Barbara Street, where that street is daily crowded by many workers. It seems every single worker has to have his own pickup or his own Sprinter van or whatever. They crowd the street, et cetera. It's very disconcerting. As an architect for 40 years in this city, I've observed several construction sites, and I'm sorry, I'm not sympathetic to their dilemma. They could do a lot better job of policing their behavior and how they park on the streets. And certainly, I think there's a lot of our members that are not sympathetic to Cox cable. We're subject of a monopoly, we have to put up with them. And if Southern California Gas Company or Southern California Edison has a yard where they can park their vans and have their crews available for emergent situations, then Cox Cable can do the same thing. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Mr. Sweeney, you understand that if we pass this, you're still going to have that parking problem near construction sites?
Yes, and, and I would hope that as we move forward, that the building and planning folks really pay attention to the parking stipulations they put in place via Planning Commission and other actions from the review boards to monitor the construction sites. We've had some construction sites on the Riviera where it's been an absolute chaos during the course of the day, where residents can't get through on the street, on streets like Farilla Road, particularly all the T-Fire projects that were going, I was up there one day where you could not physically get through the road.
So narrow. But more to the point, for Upper East, you have people coming up and camping overnight, do you not?
Yes, and that's continued.
Any kind of number on that?
We've had five or six to about eight, and I've discussed this with Ms. Murillo, who actually went out and knocked on doors and identified those folks that are using, Mr. Cologne's term, chronic trading off the, they played the 72-hour game.
Right, seems to be on Garden Street, there's always...
Yes, there is, there is a group that trade off, and they continually park in front of the seminary.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Natasha Todorovic, and then Elizabeth Wilson.
Hi, I was going to say, public streets should be safe, and then I heard all this other interesting stuff, which is really kind of exciting. I did a quick calculation, I think I spent maybe about three years over the last 20 living in Europe, and not living, but I go three, four, five times a year. So this comment about these vehicles are designed for narrow European streets, therefore it fits Santa Barbara, it's missing something important. It's missing the fact that Europeans drive little cars. They drive Fiat's, they drive Smart Cars, they park on sidewalks unlike us. So when we're driving down the streets in Europe, there are teeny-tiny cars passing each other. So when I'm trying to go home and there's a giant tow truck parked on my street, I've got to go into the other lane to try to pass it just to turn into my driveway, which is dangerous. I've driven down Milpis Street on numerous occasions with these oversized vehicles encroaching into my lane, and at rush hour, you can't move over because SUVs are taking up the entire lane. So it creates a dangerous situation, not to mention that we've got bicyclists going down that lane sometimes as well. It's a dangerous situation, and I'm thrilled you guys are looking at addressing it. Thank you.
Elizabeth Wilson, and then it'll be Theo Kracki, Jason Kopus, and the final speaker will be Samuel Goodman.
Hi, greetings. I just wanted to also say I oppose the restrictions on some of the oversized vehicles, especially regarding the harbor and ocean-related community. They do have big vehicles, they cannot fit their things in Sprinters, fishermen, and they also don't work nine to five or eight to five on daylight hours. When fish come in, they're all floating, they're waiting, and it's also a lot of times the primary... their primary vehicle. And so, and another reason is because probably a lot of them would not qualify for a permit, your $650 permit, because maybe they don't have a business license in the city, or they may have lived out of city limits. But per your thing, you have to have a city business license and live within the city. Unfortunately, most of the areas in Santa Barbara have been priced out for them, so they may be living in Galita beyond many of those people, too. So they would not even qualify for that. And so are people supposed to just get extra cars and put them to drive around and not have one car as their primary vehicle for work and, and use?
You just need to address this, we'll, we'll comment after public comment.
Yeah, is that what the, you know, for people who just use it as a primary vehicle and will not be able to put them on the streets, you're probably going to see more activity. You might see more activity as far as car use in the harbor, where anyone can get a permit to park their car constantly. It will be filled up with people's oversized vehicles, which it already is, and college kids are also doing that because they find that's cheaper, too, and they have better parking than getting at the college. You know, the other issue is that you consider it a nuisance to create a immediate public health, safety, and general welfare by obstructing visual access to scenic resources, including historic landmarks, Pacific Ocean. Your own AUD programs do that. But the other part of you say, well, you're creating this nuisance, this is why we're doing this, this ordinance, is that it's, it could be with engines running, and it creates air quality and poor air quality and standards and safeties. But it's very data poor. There's no data, again, to, you know, really looks at these oversized vehicles as why they are a nuisance.
Thank you.
Okay.
Theo Kracki.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, my name is Theo Kracki, I'm a 36-year resident of Santa Barbara. And I am in favor of an oversized vehicle ordinance, because I believe that its original intention was to eliminate RV parking by homeless people in residential neighborhoods. However, it seems that in the process, this has become another example of overregulation by our city council. And I just hope that you can focus on the original intent of what caused this whole conversation to begin with. This 1.3% of all vehicles that are, that are commercial are being attacked under this. These are contractors, like a few people have said. They're hard-working people, they don't need any more burden at all. I get it, I think it's important to regulate them, but register them, make them get a permit, but don't charge anything for the permit. Zero, maybe $20 to cover the cost of the sticker and delivering it. But I just really request that you change the ordinance to make it a nominal fee, if anything, for the people to register their commercial vehicles, because that's what they're here for. This is business in this town, and it's really important. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Kopus.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you for giving me the time, thank you for presenting everything today. I'm a 36-year-old resident of Santa Barbara, been here my whole life. I wanted to come as a resident, not as a commercial person who has a job, uses a Sprinter, but rather has a Sprinter as a primary vehicle for commute to work and also for recreational purposes with me and my family, four-year-old and three-year-old daughter. I use, we use these vehicles for recreational, but also as a primary vehicle. There's plenty of people here in this town who use it as a primary vehicle. This ordinance would then restrict me from owning that vehicle. I don't think that there's anything in the California law that states that the city can tell me what vehicle I can own or whatnot. This would hinder my ability to own a vehicle of a particular size. The reason, contrary to what was just said previously, in my house specifically, you cannot park a Sprinter in the driveway, it's too short. That makes me have to park it on the street, because if I park it in the driveway, it's going to overhang in the sidewalk, and that's illegal. So you would have to park it on the street, and now illegal. So what am I to do with my primary vehicle that's now illegal to park it at my house when I return from home to work? Or maybe I'm using my wife's car on the weekend to go see the movies. So thank you for that considerations of why this would hinder me from owning a primary vehicle.
Mr. Hotchkiss has a question for you.
Yeah, I'm not sure about, do you get a parking ticket if you hang into this, over in the sidewalk? You can? Okay. Other than that, you can certainly drive anywhere in the, in the city, you understand that?
Yeah.
And you can park in a private lot, whether it's Ralph's...
Sure, but like I said, that's impractical, because at nighttime, what am I going to do with my vehicle when I return home and try to sleep? I can't keep driving around all night long.
Yeah, that part I can't answer for you. I'm just trying to point out, though, that when you say you're sharply restricted, I think it's not as sharp as you may think.
Well, and then to, back to the numbers, just, I mean, maybe you can respond or think about it down the road. What am I going to do at nighttime when I need a return? I mean, my, my, my wife's supposed to pick me up at a valid parking lot and then come pick me up and bring me home every day, and then take me to my vehicle in the morning to get to work?
Mr. Dominguez has a question for you.
I want to make sure I understood your fact pattern. You use your vehicle for work?
No, primary vehicle.
You just use it to commute to work?
Commute to work, it's, you know, just like many other member, or sorry, residents in town, it's a primary vehicle. It's also a multipurpose vehicle, primary vehicle, but also a great vehicle to store all your recreational gear for the weekend, like it was...
I understand that, I just, I just wanted to know the situation, because your neighbors and businesses in my district, you know, have a differing viewpoint, so I wanted to see if you had a further justification. And I understand it, I've owned a van and a four-wheel drive, but I just wanted to see if there was a commercial aspect.
No commercial, just straight, you know, primary, I'm a resident, and I use it just like anyone else does.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Samuel Guzman, and then Robert Becerra will be the final speaker.
Hi, my name is Sam Guzman, and I represent Stables', which is a local business, and also the newly-formed California Mobile Vending Association. The reason I'm here is because I do operate a business in the city, many of you are aware of it. We have logs for many areas that we work at where there has been zero accidents, zero incidents. We're more than happy to provide you with those logs in the hours. I don't really think that this has anything to do with public safety. You guys are trying to eradicate things, and there's a lot of holes in this. It's an absolute mess. I'm a really nice guy, but when it comes down to something that I absolutely believe in, I become a fighter. And the reality is, is I've been looking at everything, and I've stayed out of it, I've gone to some of the workshops, but the reality is, you guys are trying to eradicate things. Everybody always, already pays the state of California for commercial privileges. Also, I don't know what these permits have anything to do with public safety. If the city has been aware for many years that we have European streets, why have they not been modernized? Why are these sidewalks so big? Shorten them up. The visibility factor, you know, I haven't had an issue with it. I'm a cyclist as well. I've been hit by an actual vehicle, not a commercial vehicle. So in this case, why is the city not pro-small business? On July 7th, the City of Santa Barbara gave a permit to In-N-Out Burger to park what was the equivalent of an 18-wheeler in the funk zone on Yananali. Are you guys not informed on what is happening here? You guys are concerned about public safety, but then you give all these parking spaces to a huge vehicle that seriously impacts the public safety? Like I said, there's a lot of holes, I'm willing to explore them, I really think that you guys should rethink this, start over, find out what the mission is.
Thank you. Robert Becerra.
Thank you for letting me speak today. I didn't come prepared with any dialogue, but I have been listening. And I run a small business, and I've been, I've had one of my vehicles towed for being parked for three days. I got four tickets in one day, four tickets in another day, and then it was towed. It cost me $1,700. I feel like we're being punished as small business owners trying to, you know, help out the community with lucrative businesses, and I just don't feel like it's fair. Like, again, I didn't bring any, anything to, you know, I just kind of walked up here, and I'm just not happy with it, and I think that we need to think about the small business owners and the people that are keeping Santa Barbara running.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss has a question for you.
You got four tickets one day?
I got three, one day.
Three, one day, first day?
Three, one day, three the other, and it takes five, I believe.
And did you, did you not think maybe I should move my truck?
I wasn't, I wasn't there for the two days, and, and so it was still...
But you know the, the rules about 72 hours, you know?
Yeah, but that's two days.
Yeah.
So that's not 72 hours.
All right, so what was your violation? What did it say on the...
It said being parked for longer than two hours. I got three tickets every two hours, which is absurd.
All right.
It cost me $1,700, I just got the ticket.
I understand, but you, you violated the law.
Violated, is it a law right now?
Parking law, what's that?
Is it a law right now?
There are, there are limited parking, like 75-minute, 90-minute parkings, that could have been what it was.
I feel like the small business community is being affected very negatively. I don't agree with it, and I feel like we need to show some leniency, and I just don't agree with it at all.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes public comment, it's to the council. Start with Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Bailey. Mr. Bailey, we've talked a lot about the dimensions and how we derive them and whatnot, and people have asked about the logic behind the height part of the, I know it's in the staff report, but would you, for the, for the public, go behind the logic for, the logic be behind the law, the height part, Kenton?
Sure.
Height part of the, of the equation, please.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, my name's Derek Bailey, I'm with the Public Works Department. So the, the height, the issues with the height are related to visibility. Both visibility from a side street or a driveway when you're trying to pull out into moving traffic, or visibility of traffic control devices, as Mr. Cologne had in his slideshow. So the issues with the height, as you're trying to pull out from a side street, really speak to how well somebody on a side street or a driveway can see around that vehicle. You know, often with smaller passenger vehicles, you can see in, around, even through the windows of smaller passenger cars, but once we're talking about tall vehicles, they become very difficult to see through and around. And as Mr. Cologne had in the slideshow, visibility of traffic control devices is also very important. In Santa Barbara, one thing we've really tried to avoid is use of traffic signals with mast arms. Many of our traffic signals are what we just call side-mounted, so they're only mounted on, on the corners and they don't hang over the streets. So those traffic signals, stop signs, warning signs that warn of traffic hazards ahead, they're all affected by visibility of tall vehicles that park near them. So we feel the traffic safety will be improved if those taller vehicles are regulated.
And is there some logic or some equation behind the, was it 82 inches, the height? I know it's that standard in a few communities. Is there, is, what's the science behind that?
We're, we're trying to be consistent with other communities, so that there is the ability to go from community to community and have some consistency. Generally speaking, that height will allow visibility at a distance of some traffic control devices over them.
Thank you.
Ms. Murillo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So when I voted for this at the end of last year, I was, I felt like I was bargaining with my colleagues up here to create this process, which we carried out, Safe Parking, Councilmember Hotchkiss and I, stakeholders, the police, people who live in their RVs came to the table, actually sat there, it was amazing, so that we could find solutions for, for that population. And about that time, the people with the tall vans became aware of what was happening. And, and then now, Mr. Cologne is doing his job. He's set forth these rules, it was council direction, you know, let's find out, how can we regulate tall commercial vehicles? But I, I voted for it reluctantly back then, and I cannot vote for it today. Now that we get the full picture of this is infringing on people's freedoms to have these, these vehicles, and, and it's very anti-business, and I know you don't mean to do that, Mr. Cologne, because this was the direction that we were, we asked you to look at. We asked you to look at regulating tall commercial vehicles, and you came up with this system. And certainly, $650 a year per vehicle is too much, and they're already registered, they already have a business license. I, I think the commercial vehicles are part of our, our commerce and our business community, and I don't want to give them any more, any more burdens. And so that said, I will continue to do my work, trying to address people who live in their cars and impact the neighborhoods, like we've been doing. And they are not unreasonable people, people who live in their cars, and I'll just remind us that, you know, some of them have children, they are disabled, they're elderly, they have problems, that's why they can't find a place to live in Santa Barbara. So I can't, I can't continue to put this ordinance forward anymore. Madam Mayor, like I said, I voted for it reluctantly, and then the tall vehicle scenario played out, and now this, the new look at, at the commercial situation is, it's unacceptable to me. Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Well, I also voted to go down this path, and I'm reminded of where we ended up with the bike lane on Mitchell-Treina Street, and this feels a little bit like that. And I, I want to congratulate staff on all the really careful work that you've done. I think that Mr. Cologne and the other staff have navigated this as carefully as you possibly could. This is, this is really complicated between competing interests and people's lifestyles and public safety, and these are absolutely legitimate issues, and they are in conflict with each other. There is no way that there is a silver bullet path that makes everybody, that solves problems and doesn't harm anybody. So that's, that's just the bottom line to this. And taking more time and looking at it more carefully isn't going to change that. It just is one of those things. And that's why we have this public process, that's why we invite you to participate. Mr. Cologne and the staff have really worked hard to integrate your thoughts and your concerns and tried their best to come up with a path, but I just, at this point, am convinced by the sheer numbers involved. This is the first time that we have had this information in our deliberations, is though it is the number of vehicles that we are regulating in relation to this problem. And to me, there are a lot of vehicles that we are regulating. I don't think we had a sense of that at the beginning of this process, I certainly didn't have a clear sense of that. In addition to the, you know, approximately 1,000 vehicles that residents of Santa Barbara own and businesses own, there are a lot of vehicles that are in the South Coast that come into Santa Barbara on a daily basis. That is one of the things that is part of our history, is we've been the center of commerce in the South Coast for, for a very long time. So we have probably another 1,000 vehicles that come and go within the city limits on a daily basis, and we don't have a place for the people who own those vehicles to park, other than the off-street parking that, that is available on lots. And that is very limited, it is a practical matter, but I don't have an answer to this. This is not going to get easier as time goes on. If these vehicles continue to proliferate and they become bigger, there is going to be a tipping point where public safety and, and other people's judgment, or maybe even today, will weigh in, and people will say it's not acceptable. And so I don't know that folks who have these vehicles and are using these vehicles for business, I think they need to think hard about that, and about how that impacts the community, because there is an impact on the community. Anybody who drives on any very narrow streets and is honest knows that there are times when you have to get out of the lane, you have to get into unsafe situations because of the presence of these vehicles on our streets. I just don't think this is the right way to regulate that at this point in time. I just can't go there. I understand that the original problem remains, but I'm not sure we have a good solution for it at this point in time, so I'm not, I'm not going to support this motion, or this ordinance today.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, when we started down this path and we talked about how to do this with, trying to keep the public right-of-way safe and try to keep neighborhoods what their original purpose was to be, and the original purpose is not vehicle storage. As a matter of fact, the public street is not meant for vehicle storage, regular passenger vehicles, oversized vehicles. The public street is meant to be the public right-of-way. I live in a neighborhood that has a brick mason, a South, Southern California gas guy, and a toy contractor. a toy contractor live on my street, and have all seen their commercial vehicles. None of them use that street for the overnight parking, however, because we've got a lot of little kids on our street. We, and I have a lot of buddies that have these, the Sprinter vans, maybe they're going to be ex-buddies pretty soon, I'm not sure, because we all like our water toys and we keep our water toys in our big Sprinter vans. And, but the purpose of the public right-of-way, you think about, we've gone through with the Bike Master Plan, with the dedication Division Zero process coming up. All the things we're trying to do to try to keep the public right-of-way as sanctified as we can for the purpose that it was meant for. It is not for vehicle storage. And living on the mesa, we're the home of vehicle storage, because I've got all the renters and the city college kids and whatnot. But what we don't seem to have, and I don't know if the neighbors communicate with each other, I certainly don't communicate with them about it, but people don't park their large vehicles on. Sometimes there's a visiting RV, or somebody will bring their commercial truck home and their trailer, but not for long. And there's like signs up everywhere, please slow down, there's kids playing and whatnot. People seem to get that, and I think that's important to realize. In terms of the utilities and the Cox people versus the gas company, whether it's the SWAT team and the guy that drives the Bearcat, you know, I don't think it's appropriate to have them parked on the street overnight. I don't think it's fair to the neighbors. I don't think it's fair to the community. I don't think it's fair to the public right-of-way. It's what the streets were meant for. I think that Mr. Klon's been really responsive to everybody's concerns, and I know the commercial guys have a lot of concerns, and I totally get that. I'm a small businessman myself, and I think there's a way to look at this, and I think perhaps that the annual fee is onerous. I think I'd like to revisit that. I think that's overstated personally. But I do think there's a way to organize this. I do think there's a way to purpose this. I do think there's a way for the community to be conscious of each other. Where do you park your vehicle and why? Do I just drive it home because I can? Or do I park it in my driveway to get it out of the people's way? Or am I advertising my business with a big billboard sign on the side of it, which I've got a few complaints from neighborhoods that there are certain businesses that tend to do that? And it may be their primary vehicle. I don't really know. That's not our job to determine that. Our job is not to determine how you get to and from, or what your job is or whatnot. We don't want to suppress small business. We don't make it harder than it is, and Lord knows it's really hard. So that's why I say along with your business license, perhaps a very nominal fee to do the sticker and the permit, because I think we have solved much of the commercial dilemma as far as when you're on the job and what you're doing. You want to go home and park your truck. I have a plumbing contractor who lives about three blocks away who parks six trucks on his lawn. Yeah, I just don't think that's, that's not very neighborly. That's not the purpose. He doesn't have a commercial yard. He has a front yard. So why should that be okay? Yet he would say, well, he's a small business. He's got a lot of, you know, a lot of expense. So I think there's a, there's a reasoned approach here. I think it works in other communities. I think it can work here. I think we can go out of our way to try to accommodate the commercial use. The commercial storage on the street overnight in a residential neighborhood, I'm sorry, I can't buy that. I just don't think that's legit. I think that belongs to you and your neighbors for residential purposes, for right-of-way, and for safety. So the neighborhoods need to have some sanctity. Commercial areas, fine, and keep business going, but not at the expense of your neighbor's quality of life or your own.
Mr. Dominguez?
So I think Mr. Rouse summed up a lot of what I wanted to say, so I'll kind of focus then on the public safety aspect, and it seemed like there are a lot of questions about what evidence we have. Santa Barbara is one of the most dangerous cities in the state for pedestrians and bicyclists because of traffic accidents. We have one of the worst records per capita. This is something that we need. This is not going to cure our traffic problems. There are still going to be accidents. But in my district particularly, and I'm representing my district today when I'm talking about Milpus State Street and all the streets that go in between, I've heard comments from, I don't cross at the corners anymore because people can't see me and I can't see people. I go to the middle of the street because then at least I can walk between a couple parked cars or oversized vehicles, and I've only got to scramble 20 feet to get to the other parked car, and then I'm safe. We have a real problem. This isn't a perfect solution. I'd like to amend the fee to 215. I think that was the 650 divided by three that at least one person thought was reasonable. That's, if you compare that to parking of any city in the state, I'm sure that's a bargain. We need to do a lot more to make small businesses profitable and safe in Santa Barbara. There's a lot of things we could do. I talked earlier about getting plan checks done and upgrading our contracts and getting more personnel to help businesses get started quicker. But the safety issue, we, at our last meeting where we dealt with this, the day before, an oversized vehicle parked right in front of Rusty's Pizza on Milpus, and I was walking by, someone came by and clipped the back of it. He pulled over in front of the liquor store, came back, talked to the oversized vehicle owner, ended up giving him a 20, and then he took off. And this, and near misses happen on Milpus all the time. Again, because of the design of Milpus, there's not a lot we can do as a city to fix the design of Milpus. We've just got to move oversized vehicles off of Milpus onto off-street parking or get them a permit so we can make sure that the parts of Milpus they do park on are safe. So we started with a very simple ordinance, and our city attorney has met with people. I've talked to the Chamber and Cox and the gas company to try to figure out how we can manipulate it even further to make it responsive to people's needs. I feel this is a pretty decent compromise. What I'd like to ask, aside from reducing the fee to 215, is that staff come back to us in a certain amount of time after this has passed and bring us some data and some results on how effective it's been? Can we tweak it further to help the small businesses and contractors achieve their goals? Let me see if there's one more note here. That's, that's it for now.
I have a question before, and then Mr. Hotchkiss. On this fee, which I also think is too high, so we'll get to the number. But if, there was a question of can multiple vehicles be under the same permit? Now, if you wanted to have a parking permit, you're already getting a business license fee that's covering all the vehicles in the business, but couldn't you also have a parking permit that shows the list with the VIN numbers or license plates or something that would incorporate under that same permit, and you just hand out the same sticker that would go with whatever, you know, so you have the permit with the actual vehicle information, and you have a placard that could be handed out, however many they need, and you have one price for that? Is that a possibility implement, to implement?
Madam Mayor, yes.
Okay, so that's, that's another way that we could look at this. Okay, Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Klon, you wouldn't have to be a resident of Santa Barbara to have one of these permits if you're a business, correct?
That's correct. That was a misunderstanding.
Okay, so just to address what you were bringing up, Mr. Hart, which I think is a good point, an out-of-towner, as it were, could still benefit from this program. And I see it as a benefit for neighborhoods. I see it as a benefit for safety. I see, I hate the idea that it costs anything for a business, but I think you have to realize that when these expanded vehicles, now popular that weren't a while ago, they do present a problem, and we need to govern them some way. So I would like to go forward with this. I would agree that the 650 price is too high. 250 is fine by, 215 is fine by me. Thank you.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, this is one of those no-win discussions that we get to have. It's just, there is not an easy way to handle this problem, and there's not an answer that's going to make us happy. However, I do think that the efforts that have been made are the best available for managing this problem. Certainly, the fee is excessive, and I think that's, it sounds like we're on board with that. But with great reluctance, I'll be supporting this ordinance.
Thank you all for coming in, to those who worked a lot on this issue. So when, when the issue first came to council to even open up this Pandora's Box, I voted against doing so. I didn't think it was, well, I voted against doing so. Then when the first iteration came back, I think, was it even unanimous? It may have been a 6-1 or unanimous vote when it finally came back to us, but then realized there were some issues, and we've had these, these concerns. Here's my, here's my concern is that if we just say no, then we have absolutely nothing on the books. We already repealed the old ordinance. That's gone. And in fact, that old ordinance wasn't working either. And I think, as Mr. Klon did his research, that ordinance could actually be more challengeable than this one. So that's not an option. I am, have been always concerned also about people who live in their vehicles and what happens to them. It was to that effect when I heard, what, about a few weeks ago, that there were only eight spots out of the 40 that we were looking at secured to try to initiate some, and just last week, we have definitely two, maybe 10. So, and we're talking about a maximum of 40. So for that population, I think with a little extra elbow grease and work, and I'm happy to work on that separately, you don't need a whole extra task force to do it, but, you know, we can get that accomplished. Because if we don't put something on the books, then I think the issue related to people who live in their vehicles, that is not a goal for anyone to be in, and we need to do what we can to get them to, into regular housing in some capacity. And this program works, and this is a way to help accommodate that, and we're actually going to help pay for that. We have already put that in the budget. The, so all these other issues have come up, and the only other, the, I've heard during, while people are working, there's an exemption, there's emergency exemptions, there's necessary work overnight exemptions, there's trying to make something as, the only thing that I've, I've heard really that is a problem is someone who has an oversized vehicle who just doesn't have a long enough driveway for it to park, and it's their personal vehicle. I frankly, that is a problem, and there's always going to be some problem here. I'm not sure how to fix that problem, but I think the alternative of not having anything on the books is going to create more additional problems in a variety of other capacities. I do think the 650 is way too excessive. I think we, 215 was a number that came up. That's fine with me as well for, for the business. And, and I also agree that this should come back. This is, this should be, did I read that it was September 5th when it actually becomes effective, if we were to move forward today? I saw that date somewhere.
Yeah, right after Labor Day.
Okay, so probably at least six to nine months after the effective date, not from this date, because you want it to actually be enforceable, to come back to the council at that point. And there'll be definitely one or two other people up here. They can decide if it's working or not. But I think to do nothing and then just have nothing on the books, you're just going to start all over again and create other problems. So, so I'll be, I'll be voting for this, with the exception of this change to change the fee to 215. So is there a motion? Mr. Rouse?
Um, I was, before the motion, Madam Mayor, I was going to think about, you know, we're kind of trying to tie the, the commercial fee into the visitor fee or some kind of mathematic formula with that. And of course, there are two different absolute operations, and I think, for me, the business fee should be even more nominal. I would like to see us do something like a fee for the, every, a business license pays like, you know, a hundred bucks for the initial vehicle and 50 bucks for subsequent vehicles thereafter, or maybe $200 for the first. I mean, along those lines, because of the visitor thing, the guest thing, that's a different situation. It's actually a lot more labor-intensive in terms of staff. So I'd like to see us even bring that down a little bit lower.
Well, if you want to make a motion to incorporate that, we can see where that goes.
All right, thank you. Madam Mayor, I will move, to move staff recommendation with the adjustment to the fees, and the fee schedule would read as a business license plus $100 for the first vehicle and $50 for subsequent vehicles in the system for that business license.
Is there a second?
There is.
Okay. All right. Does that make sense in terms of the fee? Mr. Klon, you were about to put your light on.
A parliamentary issue for the councilmembers who might oppose this, that a no vote won't stop the ordinance from going into effect. A no vote will take away the accommodations for businesses and news gathering organizations that we've written into the amendments. So it's a bit of a parliamentary predicament.
So what we're voting on is an amended, because we voted on the older ordinance. This is to amend the ordinance?
Correct. This is to add a, an accommodation for businesses that wasn't there before, as well as news gathering organizations.
Okay, so just to be clear about what's happening is, so I, so in my rationale that, okay, so saying that if we say no to this, then nothing is on the books, that's not the case. I was, that's correct. What is on the case is what we voted for before, which doesn't have any of the exceptions for the businesses involved or the newscaster organizations. So that has, so the one we voted for has not been repealed. That's still actually on the books, just hasn't been enforced yet until we had this meeting to decide what to do. Is that, that's more accurate? Okay, that, right. Thank you for making that clarification. Okay. Mr. Hart?
Well, I appreciate Mr. Klon's clarification. I'm still going to vote no, because I think I just can't support this direction, and there's no vehicle for me to express that, other than to vote no on this motion. But I understand the distinction and appreciate the difference, and understand the complexity and the challenge that we have with this. So I understand people's different view on this.
Okay, Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I echo Councilmember Hart's thanks to Mr. Klon for his clarification. I respect what you said. I hope people respect my vote today. And I want to add that I'm hoping that the process that we started with Councilmember Hotchkiss and the mayor now is, thank you, working with the faith communities to find daytime parking spots and safe parking, and Christine Schwartz has been in the audience. Thank you for what you do. That we might continue to specifically look at, how do we prevent towing of the vehicles? And I think we can get there. There are some philanthropists in town who will pay for parking citations, and that'll certainly help. And especially people who are in the safe parking program, they have a commitment to finding a housing for themselves. And so that, that, I'll be voting against it, of course, but what I would say is that I'm hoping that we can find a way for our police department to impound as few vehicles as possible. The gentleman in the back talked about getting an impoundment and $1,700, you said, and that's, you're a working person that has some means, and Mr. Marin was very clear about a disabled person on $900 a month income. So thank you, Madam Mayor, for letting me add that.
Actually, on that note, I, during the budget hearing with the PD, I know I asked for, to revisit that issue about the fee, and I know the police chief's not here at the moment, but that is still something I'm interested in and knowing more about the cost about towing fees. So I'll just put that out there again, that we still need to have that conversation. Mr. Hotchkiss?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Klon for a really extensive effort and the staff. I didn't say that before, so I wanted you to know that was much appreciated, and it may not be, I don't know, any perfect amendment, but it certainly seems to, tries to go bend over backwards for the benefit of the business community. I know if I was a businessman, I wouldn't want any fee, but that's not what we're going to do here. So, no, I just echo the support. And insofar as people getting tickets and getting towed, to quote Chris Rock, first off, obey the law, and then if you have a problem after that, you have to look in the mirror. So in any case, let's move forward with this.
Mr. Dominguez?
So I wanted to reach out to my colleague, Ms. Mario. Sounds like you're torn here, and I was wondering if there's any amendments we could make today that would bring your support, because quite frankly, I was surprised that you changed your position because you were on ordinance, and you led us down this path. And if there was something you saw in ordinance or talking to people that you think we could, we could fix here. Obviously, we're never going to get a perfect piece of legislation, but I don't want to be politically cynical and wonder, but what are, what could we do to fix it today in your eyes?
Did I lead us down this path? I, did I hear you say that? You know, we've all been sitting up here trying to find the right solutions for poor people, and, and, you know, Councilmember Hotchkiss, I'm speaking to you, sir. So, so the vehicle gets impounded, and then they're homeless. So they go from the motor home, which is all they've got, onto the street, into the bushes. You can talk about them obeying the law, but I just wanted to point that out. And thank you, Councilmember Dominguez, for asking, but no, there is nothing that would change my mind. But again, I reiterate that I work on the street with homeless service providers trying to solve the problem of homelessness. to solve the problem of homelessness in this town, on my own time, with my own personal, I sacrifice part of my life for that work. So I'm doing my part, even if I'm not voting for this. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion. Y'all know what it is. So if we can have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mayor Proten Dominguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Hart?
No.
Councilmember Mario?
Opposed.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye. So that passes 5-2 with Hart and Mario opposed. Thank you very much for all for being here. Why don't we take a quick break before we get to the next item?
Item number 17. Subject: New zoning ordinance. Recommendation: That council make the environmental findings containing in the council agenda report. Introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending the municipal code by amending Title I, general provisions. Title IV, revenue, finance, and purchasing. Title V, business taxes and permits. Title VI, animal control. Title VII, sanitation. Title VIII, fire and protection. Title IX, public peace and safety. Title X, transportation and parking. Title XV, recreation, beaches, and parks. Title XX, environmental policy and construction. Title XXVI, housing regulations. Title XXVII, subdivisions. Title XXVIII, coastal zoning ordinance. Title XXIX, airport zoning. And adding Title XXX, inland zoning ordinance, in order to implement the new zoning ordinance. Adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara approving a general plan map amendment for the properties at 1250 La Pecita Road. Adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara adopting an amendment to specific Plan Number One, Park Plaza, to incorporate changes resulting from the new zoning ordinance and rescinding Resolution Numbers 18092 and 94030. Adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the city, of the council of the city of Santa Barbara adopting an amendment to specific Plan Number Two, Cabrillo Plaza, to incorporate changes resulting from the new zoning ordinance and rescinding Resolution Number 83155. Adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara adopting an amendment to specific Plan Number Four, Rancho Arroyo, to incorporate changes resulting from the new zoning ordinance and rescinding Resolution Numbers 84177, 86160, 95084, and 16025. Adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara adopting an amendment to specific Plan Number Six, Airport Industrial Area, to incorporate changes resulting from the new zoning ordinance and rescinding Resolution Numbers 97132 and 98114. Adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara adopting an amendment to the administrative procedures for the implementation of the general plan growth management program and a city traffic management strategy to ensure consistency with the new zoning ordinance and rescinding Resolution Number 13010. Adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara establishing categories of parks and recreation facilities and assigning existing parks and recreation facilities to those categories and rescinding Resolution Number 97140. Adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara adopting an amendment to rules and regulations pertaining to the protection enhancement of solar access in the city of Santa Barbara and rescinding Resolution Number 16166. Adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara adopting an amendment to fence and hedge guidelines and rescinding Resolution Number 14052. Adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara adopting an amendment to the standards and procedures to implement numerical limits on the conversion of apartments to condominiums, community apartments, and stock cooperatives to ensure consistency with the new zoning ordinance and rescinding Resolution Number 91137. And adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara authorizing the city administrator to make minor text and reference changes to design guidelines to ensure consistency with the new zoning ordinance.
Phew, thank you. All right. Who's taking this over? Go ahead, Ms. Brooke.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, I wanted to just say a few words before my esteemed team here takes over the presentation. I just wanted to highlight this milestone for this team that's been working on the Enzo project for three and a half years. And as you're aware, Danny Cotto being the leader of the team throughout this time, Mark Aguilar is the project manager behind me. Prior to him, Beatrice Gallardi was leading the effort. Brenda Belts here, Dan Gullett as well, and Scott Vincent, who are in the room. Marcella Salinas is not in the room, but she was also a major team player on this effort, working long days and nights and weekends. And just really proud and excited for this day, as you'll probably get a feel for that in Danny's presentation, I know. Staff is quite excited for this moment, with, again, so much time spent on the Enzo, also by many other people in other departments of the city that reviewed administrative drafts and helped provide input and into the regulations that we're proposing to you today for adoption. Also, Martha Miller of RRM Design Group has been our consultant all along, having a lot of patients working with us on many, many iterations of nuanced zoning standards, and she's done a great job. I really want to recognize her work. Also want to thank City Administrator Paul Casey and the prior administrator Jim Armstrong, and the prior city planner Betty Weiss, for having the forethought to fund this work effort, and the city council in 2013 to fund this work effort through the capital improvement program. Without that funding, we would have still been living with our old antiquated zoning ordinance for many more years. And so we really appreciate the forethought and support of you and those leaders in the organization to see the importance of this. And so with that, I'll hand it over to the folks who have been just cranking on this for many years.
Thank you. My name's Danny Cotto, senior planner in charge of the zoning section, and I've been the leader of this work task, the new zoning ordinance. I've been told to make this short, so it's going to be as short as we can make it. There's going to, we're going to give a staff presentation, hopefully open up for public comment, and then go to city council for review, direction, discussion. And then, at the end of this, we're hoping for unanimous introduction of the new zoning ordinance and all the various ordinances and resolutions that were read by Monday. Thank you, that was a mouthful. In my staff presentation, I'll go over these eight items, objectives in consideration, timeline, organization of the Enzo, which I'll actually hand over to Martha Miller, the major, some of the major topics, council direction on two issues that the ordinance committee asked for special consideration by the council, neighborhood markets and mobile food vendors, quick thing on environmental review, our recommendations, and then the next steps. So when we started this project, we had goals, objectives, and considerations. The objectives are above, I'm not going to read them all, but basically general plan consistency and making something that's easy to understand for our citizens and us. The considerations, balancing neighborhoods, protection of neighborhoods, limited growth and economic vitality, ease of application, education, understanding of city rules, regulations that reflect the city's values, and development standards that are consistent with other portions of our municipal code. We actually started this, the city actually started this project in 2013 with the inclusion of the Enzo into the 2013 CIP, Capital Improvement Program. But we started our effort in January of 2014. The year of 2014 was basically coming up with the scope of what we were going to do, going out and talking to, I think, 15 different neighborhood or interest groups to gather support, tell them what we were doing, and try to get them to be on board with giving comments and such. 2015 and 2016, we spent basically rewriting our zoning ordinance. And that happened with the major help from Martha Miller and her team. We did that in three different modules. We had assembled an Enzo Joint Committee, which is two members of the council, Councilmember White, Councilmember Mario, and three planning commissioners. And then we had public hearings at the planning commission as well, and a number of open houses, so that we could answer people's questions about what this project was doing. February of 2017, we released the draft document for public review. And the planning commission held three hearings, the ordinance committee held one hearing. The planning commission recommended approval of, sorry, recommended that the city council adopt the Enzo as written, although there were a number of different votes and not, it wasn't all unanimous. That was a unanimous recommendation from the planning commission. The ordinance committee made a similar recommendation to council, and that was to adopt the new zoning ordinance, but with two items for consideration by the full council. And the first is neighborhood markets and single-family zones and mobile food vendors. And I'll talk about those in a minute. But first, I want to introduce you to Martha Miller from RRM Design. She's the primary architect of this format, which is so awesome. I don't know if you've had a chance to check it out, but it's great. We can't wait. So, Martha.
Well, thank you, and thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. It truly has been a pleasure working with your city, with staff, your decision makers in the community at large. The new zoning ordinance does contain substantial organization and formatting changes. So there are some changes to development standards, but not to any standards that really control growth. So no changes to residential density, your non-residential growth management, or height limits. And the nature of the changes really range from just changes to wording or formatting or general location, to some content that's changed to make it more user-friendly, but there's no change in intent or effect. There's been codifications of existing processes and policies that the city was administering that had effect, but they weren't codified and brought in. So we brought those in. And then there was newer changed content that does affect development and certain administrative procedures. One of the most notable or striking changes is a movement from a really text-heavy format into one that uses more tables, cross-references. Here's an example of use regulations, really bringing that text-heavy formatting, which isn't very user-friendly and often difficult to interpret, to table format. Again, and development standards are another example of this. So there's really a concentration on just that presentation of information, making it better, also including more illustrations and diagrams to help in the interpretation of standards, particularly certain dimensional standards. The overall structure of the ordinance starts out with introductory provisions, and then that's followed by zone regulations. One of the changes is that zone designations, the names of them changed. And again, this wasn't a content thing, it was more for clarity, to give some kind of consistency and some intuitiveness to what things mean. So for example, residential districts, now I'll start with an R. Commercial districts start with a C, where you currently have a one-family residence district with a 7,500-square-foot minimum lot size, which is called E3. The E or the 3 really don't have any connection to what that zone is. So now that's RS, residential single unit, dash 7.5, with the 7.5 referring to the 7,500 square-foot minimum lot size. Again, changes to make it more easier to use, more intuitive. The next major section is citywide regulations. So these are regulations that apply in some zones or all zones throughout the city. Those are general site regulations, things like your average unit size density incentive program, parking non-conforming provisions. So these are citywide regulations. And then that's followed by administration and permits. So identifying who has responsibility to administer the ordinance, and then give the permit procedures, so both common procedures that are common to multiple types of permits, and then procedures that are specific to certain permit types. So again, clarifying what the process is. And then finally, the more kind of reference sections are at the end, and those are use classifications, making sure all the uses have definitions and descriptions, as well as definitions of key terms. So there, it is presented as a new title as part of your municipal code, so rather than just replacing Title 28, it's added as a new Title 30. And there's really two reasons for that. The first is to differentiate between the old and the new sections. And then also because a portion of your city is within the coastal zone, and the regulations wouldn't take effect there until there's coastal commission certification. So you're going to have two until the point where that happens. So Title 28, your existing zoning ordinance would be in the coastal zone, and then Title 30, the Enzo, would apply to the inland areas. The reason why what was read earlier was so long was there's also changes to other portions of the municipal code for consistency's sake. So there's a number of related codes, and those all have updates to match references or match text changes. Again, for consistency, some changes to specific plans, minor text and reference changes, as well as to guidelines. Again, having them all work together and be consistent with each other.
Thank you. And just to reiterate, on the minor text changes, there are examples of those in the council agenda report. There's a little section on the types of things we're talking about. So reference changes, a lot of the guidelines and specific plans, they reference various sections of Title 28, the current zoning ordinance. So we had to add a reference to Title 30, that kind of thing. Also, term changes, going from a term like single-family residence to single-unit residential. Those are the types of minor changes. So even though there are 10 resolutions, and so guidelines and specific plans that were changed, that's the reason why your staff, you know, the staff report's so long. There's a lot of them, and they have a lot of strikeout changes of those new references and new terms. So I'm going to talk about a few of the major topics that were in the council agenda report. There were a number of them, but I'm only going to talk about these four. Parking requirements for food service uses, what to do about projects currently in the process, mobile food vendors, and neighborhood markets. So parking for food services was the single topic that took the most time and is the most controversial of all the topics of everything that we discussed in the new zoning ordinance. This was the thing. At the planning commission, the planning commission spent the better portion of two full hearings talking about this topic. And why is it a problem? There's a problem because the current zoning ordinance has three different parking requirements, depending on exactly what type of food service you are. If you turn your attention to this slide, the first one is sit-down restaurants, including bars and tasting rooms. That's parked at one space for three seats or one space for 250 square feet, whichever is greater. And usually, the number of seats is greater, but one of the problems that we see is that restaurant applicants will often show fewer seats on the plans to get approved, and then have more seats added later when the permit is final. The second is fast food restaurants. That's your typical burger joints, plus coffee shops, sandwich shops, ice cream parlors, that kind of thing. That has a parking requirement of one space per 100 square feet. And then retail food service, more like a retail bakery, which can be a little weird. But supermarkets, that sort of thing, one space per 250 square feet. So one of the major problems is how do you differentiate between these two? Like, what do you think the difference is between a sit-down restaurant and a fast food restaurant? Right? And it turns out, based on our ordinance, it's what kind of plates do you serve your food on? If you serve on disposable plates or edible, like an ice cream cone, that's fast food. If you serve on ceramic plates or not disposable, then you're sit-down, right? And that's, and it can be problematic. There are more than, there's more than one instance in the past few years where we've asked people for menus to show us what they're serving, to try to differentiate between sit-down and fast food. There's one that I recall where we made them show us on their equipment plan a dishwasher, because then they're actually washing dishes, right? because then they're actually washing dishes, right, instead of disposing of them. So it's a big deal. We talk, we spend, I don't know, so many hours a week talking to applicants about their food service potential, right? A bakery wants to add a coffee machine or an espresso machine. Suddenly, that's not retail food service anymore, that's fast food. Oh, you have to have more parking spaces. So, no, sorry, you can't have an espresso machine. It's endless, right? This is, so this is one of the reasons it was such a big topic for the staff. We needed to do something about it. So the new zoning ordinance proposes a single parking rate for all food service uses. For one thing, it would do is eliminate the per-seat, so we don't have to worry about how many seats are shown on the plans versus that are in existence once we go to try to eat there. And then the second is just reducing that, the amount of time and effort we spend negotiating back and forth between applicants. Now, this would only apply outside the central business district and outside of shopping centers, because those areas of town already have a single parking rate for all food service uses, and commercial, actually. So the planning commission and the ordinance committee, after long deliberation, recommends one space per 250 square feet. But at the planning commission, we spent, like I said, a number of hours talking about various different scenarios. And it came down to two scenarios that the planning commission struggled with. One was one space per 125 square feet, and one space per 250 square feet. There's quite a detailed discussion of this in your council agenda report, but it really boils down to this table. And two concepts, change of use and parking demand, right? The one space per 125 square feet is, makes change of use difficult, because you have to add parking spaces, and that's hard when you have built the built environment as it is. One per 250 makes it easy, because easier at least, because you don't have to add parking spaces. But on the flip side, parking demand, one per 125 meets the parking demand, so there's no unmet parking on the street. But one per 250 doesn't do that, right? So it's easier to become a restaurant, it's easier to become a restaurant, but that could result in parking demand that's unmet, that's out on the street. And there wasn't a single rate that would give you the best of both worlds. It was, it was one, you know, good on one, bad on the other, bad on one, good on the other, right? So after, oh, let's see, I think I have a different slide. Just to give an example of how this works, if you had a 2,000-square-foot tenant space that was in commercial, general commercial use, and they want to convert to food service use, you can see on the two columns, you have a one per 125, and then one per 250. The way it works is you take the amount that's required for the proposed use, and then you subtract out the number that are required for the existing use. So in the one per 125 scenario, 16 would be required for the food service use, subtract out eight that are required for the current general commercial use, and an additional eight parking spaces are required. And that can be very, very difficult, because the building's already there, the parking's there, there, I mean, even adding one parking space is super difficult, let alone eight, right? One per 250, eight would be required for the food service use, minus eight that are required for the commercial use, zero parking spaces. It's much easier to come up with zero than it is to come with eight. But those eight parking spaces, the parking demand for those have to go somewhere, and they won't be on the property, so they'll be, they'll most likely be out on the street somewhere. So we just wanted to give you a very good example about how this works. And just to say one more time, both the planning commission and the ordinance committee recommended the one space per 250-square-foot ratio. Next, what do we do with projects currently in the process, right? Enzo is proposed to become effective October 1st. Any projects that are submitted after that date would have to comply with the new standards. What do we do with those ones that are currently in the process? Now, our perspective is that most people want to use the new standards, because they're better. But some people, because they've spent so much time and money going through the process, will want to use the old ones. And who gets, at what point do they get to, do they sort of vest their ability to use the old code? The planning commission recommended two points in time. One, that the building permits issued, or, two, you have either a project design approval from the design board, or some other discretionary approval, like a modification or a planning commission approval. That was a four-three vote, and the three who voted against it felt like that wasn't early enough in the process. It takes a lot of time and money to put an application together, and maybe go through several iterations of reviews at a design board, or going forward for the planning commission, and to require a project to be approved before it's, quote, vested, that they didn't think that was far enough in the process, or early enough in the process, I'm sorry. We took that concern to the ordinance committee, and as a result, the ordinance committee added a step that was earlier in the process. So what the ordinance committee recommends is, if a project that's going through the discretionary review process has been deemed complete, then that also would allow them to use the current ordinance. So that's where we are with projects currently in the process. Now, there's been a lot of misinformation in the media about mobile food vendors. So I want to try to clear some of that up.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, hi.
On the last slide there, you said the deemed-complete business.
Yes.
On discretionary projects, do you not have a deemed-complete for ministerial processes?
No, we don't.
Okay. So, thank you.
Okay, so the zoning ordinance only applies on private property. It does not apply in the public right-of-way. So mobile food vendors that I'm talking about is only on private property. There's a whole separate effort going on at the city attorney's office regarding mobile food vendors in the public right-of-way, and I'm not going to talk about that. Getting back to private property, which I will talk about, currently, mobile food vending is not allowed, period. The zoning ordinance, municipal, does not allow mobile food vending on private property. So all the mobile food vendors that you see in parking lots or gas stations, those are operating outside the realm of legalness. What the new zoning ordinance proposes is to allow them. We want to allow them, but subject to some regulation, right? Right now, they're not allowed at all, it's kind of the Wild West. The staff's perspective was, let's open the door a certain amount, but let's not just fling it all the way open, right? So that's the perspective that we came with. Let's put in some regulations and see how it works out. So what's proposed, I'm going to go through. They have to be located in a non-residential zone that contains a non-residential use. There's only one mobile food vendor allowed per parking lot. You can only sell food and beverages. There are no restrictions on the time of day, so it could be there any time of day or night, but there are limitations, as proposed, for four hours at a, four hours per day maximum, and 90 days per year maximum. And that's trying to make them temporary. So when we first started this, we thought three hours would be enough. The city attorney's office and planning staff had a joint meeting with mobile food vendors back in something like December of 2015. And as a result of that, we went from three hours to four hours, because that seemed like the minimum time that most of these food vendors needed to get to a place, set up, get all their fryers going and whatever, and then be able to sell food for a certain amount of time, and then close up afterwards. Vehicles have to be motorized, no pushcarts or standalone trailers. They have to be at least 500 feet from each other on private property. Since we don't regulate the public right-of-way, we didn't feel like there was a way to say it had to be 500 feet from any other mobile food vendor. Parking, this is kind of a cool thing for food vendors. You can, mobile food vendors would be allowed to displace up to three required parking places for the four hours a day, but no more than 10% of the lot. So you'd need at least a 30-place, 30-space parking lot to get the three. If you had a 20-space parking lot, you could only have, you could only displace two parking spaces. That's how that works. But when the business is closed, there's no limit. You can use the entire parking lot if the business is closed. There's no minimum distance from schools. Trash receptacles are required, no music allowed, and you need a business license.
Jimmy Derry, so what that means is, business is closed, you could do any size lot, as opposed to?
You can, well, what I meant to say was, if the business is closed, you can use the entire parking lot, right? If the business is open, you can only use up to 3% or 10%.
Right, but if the business is closed, that allows you to use a much smaller parking lot?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure. Yes. Oh, sorry, yes. Now, under required permits, that says business license, zoning affidavit, property owner's approval. It's actually a zoning clearance. Sorry, I forgot to update this slide. So there, in the, mobile food vendors, the way it's written in the Enzo, they're a temporary use. And there are three levels of temporary uses. One is the zoning clearance, that's the easiest one to get, right? It's an application, staff reviews it, if it meets the standards, you know, basically a zoning clearance, sign off, and then off you go. And all the regulations that I've been talking about are with the zoning clearance. There is two elevated levels of permitting. One is called the performance standard permit, and one's called the conditional use permit, right? If you want to do more than what's proposed here, if you want to be there for more hours a day, if you want to be there for more days a year, if you want to be there, if you want to have more trucks than just one on this lot, you can apply for a performance standard permit, or a conditional use permit, it just depends. You know, if you wanted 10 or 12 trucks, you'd be a CUP, as opposed to two, probably it'd be a performance standard permit. So depending on exactly what you're asking for, but there are avenues built into what we have proposed right now.
Can you, what was the rationale behind no music? So if you had a truck with a band that wanted to play, I mean, I know there's a noise ordinance, but that's, there's already a noise ordinance, so why would we say no to music?
It was noise, basically, I mean.
But if you have music, and it's within the noise ordinance, why do we care?
The way that I remember it, as we put forth this question to either the, maybe both, the Enzo Joint Committee and the planning commission, and at least the majority opinion was that that music wasn't to be allowed. Let me see if I.
Okay. And when you say, do you mean live music, or if there was a recorded music? I mean, you're talking like, can I sing?
No, we were talking about recorded music.
Recorded, I'm just, you know, these things come up, believe me. These things come up. What if I want to, you know, sing for my dinner at a food truck? I don't know.
How much for a taco?
Right. Can I sing for a hamburger for today, and whatever that is? No.
So Mr. Aguilar has just told me that it is pretty common for other jurisdictions to restrict music. Even, I guess, even ice cream trucks have to turn off their music when they're stopped. Anyway, I.
Well, that drives me crazy, that sound. You know, so, okay, I get that, that wakes me up at 3:00 in the morning.
So it's a little bit, it's a little bit of that sort of thing, right? These are businesses that are there for four hours a day, and we didn't want a lot of amplified music. I mean, we did, I remember having a discussion at either the planning commission or the Enzo Joint Committee, where we said, well, what about if it was not so loud, you know, that you couldn't hear it from a certain distance? And then it's like, how do you even regulate that? So that's how we came there. It doesn't mean that that's what the regulation has to be.
Okay, no, I was asking, what was the rationale of that answer to the question? Thank you. Ms. Maria, did you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So can you tell us why only 90 days per year?
Yeah, so what, we did as much research as we could when we were coming up with this idea for regulation. And so we went to the websites of some of the popular mobile food vendors in town. And we noticed that they would rotate around. They wouldn't come to the same place every day, right? They were more like once a week. And so we thought about, okay, well, if most of these guys are only there once a week, then 90 days is almost twice a week. So maybe that's a good starting point, because it is a temporary use. And so that's just where that came from. We thought a little bit less than twice a week would be, should, might be adequate based on the research that we had done. So that's where that comes from.
Right, okay, so maybe you didn't check with Don Paco on the west side, because he's there a lot more often than just twice a week. And Tacos Pipe, which is on Milpas Street, and I know they'd like to be there more days than just 90 days per year.
No, I understand that, and I'm just saying, based on the research that we did, based on websites, so.
Well, I do recommend you try their tacos. Do some research firsthand, Mr. Cotto. But I will be trying to lobby my colleagues to allow more than 90 days per year.
Can you then explain the different, so if someone wanted to do 120 or 160 days a year, there's the middle-level permit, what does that entail? The performance permit, what is that?
Yes.
And how does that work?
Thank you. The performance standard permit is a permit that's, it's, the discretionary body is the staff hearing officer, and it would, I don't think we've fully fleshed out exactly what the supplemental requirements would be, but you'd submit, if it's like others, you would submit a letter saying where you wanted to be, how many days you wanted to be there, how many hours, what your operation would be, how you're going to be sensitive to neighbors, because you're going to be there more, you know, more often. And then it would be a public hearing, so we would notify the owners and pretty soon the tenants of property within 300 feet, and then they could come to the hearing, and they could make their concerns known. The decision-maker then would make, would make it, either approve it or not, and then that would be appealable to the planning commission, and then ultimately appealable to the council.
So if Don Paco Tacos wanted to be there for 180 days a year, they could go through that process?
They could.
And potentially get a permit for that? Is that per year, do they have to do that every year, or that's just there? Now they have 100, up to 180 days a year, they can do that? Right?
I don't remember. Hang on.
Okay. I can study it, right?
We're not sure.
Okay, maybe during public comment, you could look into that.
Yeah.
Because this issue obviously is going to come up.
Okay, yes.
Okay, go ahead. Mr. Rouse, did you have something?
A quick question. So, Mr. Cotto, we're talking, this is all about vending to the general public as opposed to doing a catering event, or something that you're there for a special reason. This is, somebody's parked in a, on private property, but they're selling to the general public as opposed to a closed crowd, right?
Correct.
And that's what this entire thing is.
Correct. If a private party, like, let's say I was having a birthday party, and I wanted to hire a mobile food vendor to come to my property and vend to my guests only, that's different. That's catering, and that's not covered, that's a.
And you have an authority to justify that, right?
Yes. Next item is neighborhood markets. Right now, in the city of Santa Barbara, neighborhood markets are not allowed in residential zones. So all of them that you see, and there are about 11 of them, are not, they're all non-conforming. The general plan has an implementation strategy to, basically to promote them. So what the Enzo tries to do, and proposes to do, is to allow them in residential zones, again, subject to some limitations. Oh, thank you. And the first regulation is that in most zones, that would require a performance standard permit, like I just described. But in single-family zones, the Enzo proposes to allow them, but with a conditional use permit. And the difference between a performance standard permit and the conditional use permit is basically that the hearing body is the planning commission, as opposed to the staff hearing officer. It's a higher level of review. And the proposed regulations are limited to 1,500 square feet per lot, they have to be at least 500 feet apart, the hours would be determined by the decision-maker, no more than 35% of the interior floor area devoted to food service, the front, outdoor seating can be in the front setback only, produce display would be allowed, but not in parking spaces or walkways and things like that. Parking would not be required for autos, but it would be for bikes. Subject to non-residential setbacks for the buildings, except if you're converting an existing building. They have to be maintained clean and orderly. They have to be maintained clean, clean and orderly. They must comply with the outdoor lighting ordinance. And again, a performance standard permit in all zones except single-family zones where a CUP would be the required discretionary permit. Now, I said there are about 11 of these in town. Two of them are, I think two of them are greater than 1,500 square feet. So for those, those few that are higher, that are bigger than 1,500 square feet, they'd be allowed a 250-square-foot addition. Now, there are a number of other major topics that were in the staff report that I'm not going to go over. Non-conforming structures, site development uses, minor zoning exceptions, central business district expansion, accessory buildings and garages, open yards, creation of new parkland or open space, accessory dwelling units, narrowing the range of allowed uses in the I-zone, non-conforming parking. I'm happy to answer questions about those, but those are of less controversy, less. So we need some council direction. On neighborhood markets in the single-family zones, like I said, they're proposed with a CUP. Councilmember Hotchkiss at the ordinance committee would like to prohibit them and ask that, that the full council discuss this item. Second, mobile food vendors on private property. Again, the four-hour daily limit and the 90-day annual limit per site. Councilmember Murillo asked for a full council discussion because she would like to expand the daily limit and the annual limit. The environmental review of this whole package is an addendum to the, the final EIR for the 2011 general plan. And now the recommendation. We recommend that the council unanimously introduce the new zoning ordinance and all related municipal amendments, adopt the laundry list of 11 resolutions that, that was read, and make the environmental findings in the council agenda report. Now, if that happens, we would come back to you on, for an adoption hearing on July 25th. That's proposed to be on the consent calendar to adopt the new zoning ordinance and the municipal amendments, and to adopt a resolution which will, which will give to you at the time to approve the Enzo and all the, all the related amendments to package into a local coastal program amendment. Once that's all done, we will package that up and, and send it off for approval for the coastal zone. And like Ms. Miller said, until the coastal commission certifies the Enzo, then, then the current, the current zoning ordinance would still apply in the coastal zone. That concludes my presentation.
Great.
We have two members of the planning commission to answer questions.
And did you have a question, Ms. Murillo? Go ahead. And then we'll.
Mr. Cotto, did you see the correspondence about hedges? There's, maybe someone's here today to talk about it. A couple of people, ever since I was elected, we've been talking about hedges, and it was kind of painful for them because somebody who didn't live in their neighborhood made a fuss or made a complaint. And I, I think the gist of what they're asking for is that, that if, how, how does it say here? That directly affected property owners get, get to have a say-so in, in the hedge issue. Did you see that correspondence?
Yes, I did. And I, quite frankly, I was surprised to get it because if, if you recall, the ordinance committee, we had a member of the public come and say that he loved it. Right? And he was one of the fence, the people who had been, who had been an advocate. So let me just describe what, what, how it exists now and what, what is proposed through the new zoning ordinance. What exists now is a minor, if you want it, there's a interior lot line, a lot line between properties. You have an eight-foot-high fence or hedge maximum height. But with a minor zoning exception, you can go additional four feet above that, so up to 12 feet. But in order to, in order to apply for the minor zoning exception, you have to have your neighbor's approval. Your neighbor has to say, I'm okay with going up the additional four feet, up to four feet. But that's only the abutting neighbor, only the neighbor who shares the property line with you. Right? And the people who were advocates for something different were saying, well, we live across a, a flag lot. So we live across a 10, we're just 10 feet away, and we're still affected, but we don't have a say about, about this minor zoning exception. And we want to, to change that. We want to do something. Right? And there were some ideas about what to do. One is to extend a radius. So if you're not just the abutting neighbor, but if you're within 10 or 15 or 25 feet, then you would have to get the approval there, that approval as well. But what, we, we floated some of this stuff to the Enzo Joint Committee and to the Planning Commission. And I know we got public comment from the Santa Barbara Association of Realtors and some pushback from the Planning Commission as well. A lot of people didn't like the idea of having the neighbors have approval authority. Right? I think I heard the term "hold, hold me hostage" over, over the hedge. So what we proposed instead was, oh, sorry, one more thing. The way it works now, the, the community development director or planning staff has the authority to make the minor zoning exception. And it's done, there's no appeal ability. What we did is we, what Enzo does is it changed the minor zoning exception responsibility. It transferred it from the community development director to the design boards, the historical landmarks commission, the architecture board review, and the single-family design board. Right? And it requires, in order to, in order to have a hearing on a minor zoning exception, you would need a noticed public hearing. So owners of property and tenants, pretty soon, within 300 feet, would get a public notice of the minor zoning exception that's happening at the design board. They would get the notice. If they were interested, they could submit public comment, they could come to the hearing, they could make their views known. The design boards would take that into consideration as they make their decision. They would decide. And then that decision is also appealable to the council. So, so instead of giving a radius for, for not just abutting neighbors, but neighbors further out to have some, have the ability to say, no, I don't like, I don't want, you can't do this. Now it's, it's kind of more the normal public comment avenue. They can come and make public comment, and if they don't like the result, they could appeal it. So that's, that's, so I think that covers the, the concern that we got in the correspondence that we got.
Well, we, we got two, and then they seem to want language specifically saying directly affected property owners. So is that in there now?
No, we say things like surrounding neighbors or surrounding neighborhood or, or abutting neighbors. The, I don't like that term because it's, it's a little bit too nebulous, like who's directly affected? I mean, someone could say, I'm a half a mile away and directly affected. But, but we think the 300 feet, I mean, if you're not within 300 feet, it'd be pretty hard to say you're not directly affected. And you get to come in, you get the notice. You get to come in, you get to have your.
Well, anyone gets to come to a public hearing.
True, but not everybody knows about it. But you would be with, if you're within 300 feet.
Or if you look at the agendas every week.
Yes.
I can be a hedged person, right?
Well, I'm, I'm just asking because they, they seem like they have their heart in it, and maybe someone's in the audience today who will speak to it. Madam Mayor, is this a good time for me to talk about my items or not?
After public comment, that would be good.
Oh, public comment, thanks.
Yep. But did you have a question, Mr. Hotchkiss?
I was just going to amplify. Part of the hedge thing we were talking about, I think evolved because at one point we had somebody drive around the city and cite hedges everywhere that were miles from where she lived, and we felt that was unjust. So this was a way to restrict that. Thank you.
Okay. I'd first like to invite, did you have a question, Mr. White? Go ahead.
I wanted to ask for at least a, a bit of an overview on an area that seemed really important, and yet it's been so non-controversial that you haven't brought it up. And that is the, all of our non-conformities that exist in the city and that how the Enzo is improving that situation. Can you give a bit of an overview on, on, on how that's?
Yes.
State the history a little bit and, and how this is helping that?
Yes. The, the city of Santa Barbara has been around for a long time, and we've had zoning in the city since about 1925 or 1926. In fact, our current zoning ordinance traces its roots, there's still language in there that's the same language that was in the 1930 zoning ordinance. And over time, the zone, the zoning designations have changed. One reason that we have like A1, A2, E1, E2, E3 for these different single-family zones is because it all, all single-family zones used to be just R1. And then as, as time went along, they wanted to differentiate between the different types of zones. Right? So, so the history of zoning has evolved over time, the standards have evolved over time as well. So there's, there's a vast number of properties that are, we consider non-conforming. They were legal at the time, they were built, but the zoning standards changed, and they don't meet, they don't meet today's code. The biggest, and the biggest and most recent time this happened was in 1975. There was a big downzoning where, where zoning, where zones went from, let's say, E2 to E3, sorry, E2 to E1. And so a whole bunch of properties are built, have houses that are built too close to the property line to be by today's standards. Right? That's non-conforming. One of the goals of this whole process was to make it easier and better for non-conforming properties to, to do something with their properties because a lot of them need modifications now. There were two ways that we thought we might do this. One is to change the zoning back to what it was or change the standards so that instead of a 10, you know, let's say, back before 1975, there's a property with a six-foot setback. In 75, it turned into a 10-foot setback. We thought, oh, maybe we could change that back. Right? And change it back to a six-foot setback. But between 75 and now, that's a long time for a new develop, for development to happen at the new setback line. So we didn't feel it was appropriate to just changes, to, to change the setback to an earlier standard. So we, we, instead, we made a number of changes that would make it easier for projects with non-conforming buildings to, to do something. The, the most major of those is something that we're calling the non-conforming addition. If you're built at least five feet from, from an interior property line, and, and you're, and you're within a setback, like a six or 10-foot setback, you can actually, Enzo allows you to add 20 linear, 20 linear feet or 50% of the floor area along the same line as, as, as your house. Right? Where it exists now. Right now, that needs a modification, but, but through the Enzo Joint Committee and the Planning Commission, we came up with a compromise to allow that kind of addition. Another example is, well, some of the minor zoning exceptions. Right? Some of those are, right now, if you're non-conforming to a setback and you want to change windows around, you need a modification. But, but the, what the Enzo allows is, if you're at least five feet away on the ground floor, you can change, you can change windows and doors all you want. If you're closer than five feet within, within, on the ground floor, you need a minor zoning exception. Or if you're any, if you, sorry, if you encroach any place on the second floor, you'd need a minor zoning exception. So it's made it easier. The minor zoning exception is a much easier process than a modification and less expensive.
And, and isn't this an area where the zones, the ZIRs, it's, it's one of the tough areas for ZIRs, is this, these non-conformities and it's?
I wouldn't say so much for the ZIRs, but just the, the plant check process in general. Right? So many people don't understand that they are non-conforming. They hide, they go and, and hire people to make drawings for the addition that they want to do. They submit, and they real, and then they, they come to us, and we tell them, oh, no, sorry, you can't do this without going through this other process, modification process. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for that extra time. Thank you, staff.
Okay. Now, I'd like to invite our two planning commissioners, Mr. Higgins, Mr. Campanella, if you'd like to say anything at this point, and then we'll have Jarrett Gordon be the first public comment speaker.
Madam Mayor, Jay Higgins with the Planning Commission. And we, we don't have a presentation to make to you. John and I are available for questions, and we've divided up the various major subject items. So when you get to one of those subjects that you have a question on, be it parking or mobile food vendors, we can, we can come up and address those individually. I'll just add, though, one of the things that, and we did, and I appreciate staff commenting on the overall effort and duration of our proceedings, they were substantial and very detailed. And I would say 90%, well, maybe 75% of, I think, what the, the public was interested in in our discussions centered on the parking issue. And then there was another 75% for STR. So that's 150%, right? So that's why our proceedings took so long. And the, the STR folks or that, that, or, or kind of maybe not put on notice that there would be some prospect, or potential changes in the NZO that pertain to that subject. And, but yet, there were some nuanced language in the code, in the various versions of the code with respect to definitions that, that found their way into our, our documents, and that's what generated so much interest. We did our best, and I think city staff did their best, and, and legal staff did their best to sort of ameliorate that or change some of that. But some of that still exists, and that'll probably come up to you in public comment. That was brought to my attention this morning, and, and I can give you some perspective on that if you, if you also, if you like as well, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you both for being here. Okay. So, Mr. Goran, and I believe you have some people waving their time to you. Tiffany, I see you there. And Pat Cahoe? Okay, so, Mr. Goran, you have up to six minutes, and then Fred Sweeney will be after you. Good, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It, it did feel like 150%. We were there for most of those meetings, and we also appreciate the work staff's done and the Planning Commission that everybody up to this point has done. It's, it's been a big process. And overall, I'm happy with the NZO overall. I mean, I think it's a great effort. It's going to really make things easier for applicants and for staff going forward. So we're glad the city's doing this. There are some niggling issues that, that we still have. Jay had talked about these definitions. Those actually were addressed. The Planning Commission deleted the problematic definitions. It was the residential use definition, and then there was a corresponding commercial use. They got deleted in their entirety. The ordinance committee, I believe, left them out again, and I would urge you to continue to leave them out. They're, they're very problematic, and nobody's proposing to put them back in. So I guess that's kind of a moot point. There is something we noticed today that we would have brought up at Planning Commission if it, if it had come to our attention sooner. But your consultant said there, she said, there's no changes to the non-residential growth management program. And that's, that's not 100% accurate of a statement. If you look at the current non-residential growth management program, and you look at the applicability of the program, it says, no application for a land use permit for a non-residential construction project as defined in section 2885020 is accepted, et cetera, without, you know, complying with this section of the ordinance. And if you look at the definition of land use permit, it's an extensive and pretty well-written definition, and it, it basically lists out conditional use permit, variances, modifications, development plans, specific plans, you know, permits, stuff you need a permit for, that you'd need to come into the city and get a permit for. The new non-residential growth management program has, has altered this, and it's nuanced, but it does substantially change the scope and applicability of the NGMP. What it says now is, it's applicable to an application for a permit for a non-residential construction project as defined in section 317020. And the new definition for non-residential construction project, what's missing from it is, is this reference to things that require a permit. Now it's just anything. Now, this, this applies specifically to short-term rentals, for example, because converting one unit isn't subject to this ordinance if it doesn't require some other permit that's an actual permit from the city. And the way that this definition has changed here to just say simply converting square footage, whether or not you need a permit, now this does apply. And now the city can use this to say, well, this is the permit that you need, even when no other permit exists, which is what they've been trying to do sort of administratively since 2015 without any, you know, actual ordinance to back it up. But they want to codify that now, and that's what's happening here. I don't, I'm not going to impute motive on this, but the effect of this is to do that. And it's problematic because if we include things like short-term rentals in non-residential growth management program, they will deplete the only 20,000 square feet per year that we have available of small additions, square footage. I don't think that's the city's intent. We don't want to have, you know, 10 short-term rental projects deplete our entire small short-term rental projects deplete our entire small additions category, and then a commercial project that needs 300 feet out of that category has to wait a year because they didn't get it. I don't think anybody on your council wanted that to happen. But that is going to be the result of, of doing this if the city continues to insist that a short-term rental is a hotel and therefore non-residential and therefore subject to this. So, you certainly have the authority to do this, but, you know, maybe you might not want to. It may be a real problem, and, and that may be the unintended consequence of everything. So, please pay close attention to that, and, and I would urge you to simply maintain the existing definition you have for non-residential limitation, which is it requires a land use permit, and keep that definition. So, we're talking about stuff that requires permits and not just changing a length of occupancy, which doesn't require that you even have to change a smoke detector. Okay? So, that's enough of that. On the parking issues, I would strongly urge you to go with the 1 per 250 requirement. That's going to alleviate a lot of existing problems for people in the city. You know, this isn't Bakersfield where you can just drive up in front of Chili's and park. It's Santa Barbara. We're built out. We want to provide flexibility for people to have different types of businesses. And restaurants is one of the few businesses left that can't be taken out of the map by people like Amazon, not yet at least. So, this would be a really big help to our restaurant community and really simplify things for applicants and staff. And I don't think I've ever heard a better description of how problematic it is now than what Mr. Cato gave today. It's, it's a real problem, and this will fix it, and I hope that you'll fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, well, thank you, Mr. Goran. We'll ask staff after public comment to comment on the, the issues. So, Fred Sweeney, Bonnie Raisin, and then Samuel Guzman will be the final speaker. Oh, maybe not the final speaker.
Some more. Good afternoon, again, Madam Mayor and council. I actually came here today to speak as, from, as part of the Upper East Association, but a moment ago, we had to deal with the hedges. So, maybe I can spend a little bit of time, put my single-family design board hat on and address that. From the Upper East side, we're in a, in conformance with the Allied Neighborhood Association in opposition to including neighborhood markets in the residential, single-family design area, or, the, single-family neighborhoods. Just want two visualizations. Can you imagine a 7-Eleven at the corner of Laguna and Los Alivas Street? For those of you not familiar, that's the corner directly in front of the Mission, front of Mission Park. That could happen. Or another visualization at Foothill and Alamar? Okay? Yeah. So, I think that's our big concern. We understand why it's in there because as city densifies, and we've all recognized that it's going to continue to do that, particularly with ADUs, AUDs, that's going to happen. And, and good planning wants to encourage people to walk and use that. We all understand that. But, part of the problem is, is the, the NZO also has to address neighborhood compatibility and character, and that would radically change some of our neighborhoods. And I understand the little ones. All 11, I've done watercolors of all 11 of the little neighborhood markets. I think they're wonderful. They've been there for years. They should exist. We should find a way to keep them. But I think we have to be very careful about where we allow neighborhood markets. And I know a CUP process would kind of do that, but I'm, I'm very leery, the Upper East is very leery of that. Now, let me switch to single-family.
You've got six seconds.
Single-family design board. On the hedges. Okay, I'll stop.
Really briefly on hedges, since you're on the board.
We're, we're the ones having to deal with the on-ground implementation of the hedge thing, okay? We're the ones that we're having to deal with it because that's now been transferred to our review. And we're going to need a little help from legal counsel as we go through this process. But let me give you one example of how that works. We had a project just recently up on the Mesa where we had the dispute, got down to the hedge between the two property owners, and they were on an odd angled lot. We had another property owner who had not been notified, was very upset, et cetera. But, the way the rules work, we can only get the two neighbors to talk to each other. They both got represented by attorneys in the meeting. It took us three meetings to get them ultimately to sit down and talk to each other and come to an agreement. We gave them some options, but we said, "Look, you've got, the way it works, you have to come to an agreement." We finally got that achieved. I think it's achievable. So, I think that the process in place is going to work, but I would urge you to revisit it. Once you get the NZO in process, revisit it so that we can kind of evaluate, does that, is that the proper way to make it work? I think it may be, but we're just now
Thank you.
dealing with that. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Wright. Yep.
Yeah. So, Mr. Sweeney, that, when you say it, it's, it's going to work, are you talking about the proposed process or the, are you, are you arguing to keep the old process?
No, no. The, the way the NZO is now
Yeah.
describing it. I think it can work.
Okay.
But I think it's going to take some time to figure out, does it really work?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bonnie Raisin?
Madam Mayor and city council, I am going to apologize for the speaker slip today. I misjudged what the content of this meeting was going to be, and I wanted to speak to parking issues regarding city-built housing. So, I will deal with that at a later date when it's appropriate, and my apologies. Thank you.
All right. Samuel Guzman, Ken Oplinger, Dudley Michael, and then Kurt Huffman.
How much time do I have? Two minutes?
Two minutes, and there's a, there's a timer right there.
Okay, perfect. So, I'm with Stables and the California Mobile Vending Association that I just formed. It saddens me that none of the food truck people are here. My background's originally in luxury hotel management, has a sommelier in food and beverage. I've worked for some of the top chefs in our country. I do retail. I suggested, I went to one of the meetings, and I suggested that they should use the definition of mobile vending from the state of California for uses of the lots. The reason I, I state that is because there's no reason for someone not to slingshot a small business from that same environment, whether it's a florist, someone who bakes bread at their house on a cottage permit, whether it's us, who design and make products that are indicative of Santa Barbara. They, they just didn't listen to anybody at those meetings. I also think that, for the food's sake, people, they are being told that it's a 500-foot radius. That's a one mile. So, if you guys are trying to ban mobile vending in the city of Santa Barbara, it's borderline a de facto ban, and also basically touching on antitrust laws. And we're going to defend it. That's why I formed this organization. I really think that we need to be more open at what can happen. We have now opened a small retail store downtown Santa Barbara. We're also on a line. We send our products all over the United States. That's what I mentioned to them as well. I think we're doing a good thing with mobile vending. Small businesses are hurting in the city of Santa Barbara. You've got to start thinking of these small businesses as being able to slingshot into these buildings. I'm considering right now moving my business onto State Street. And the reason being is because the public likes what we do. That's why I'm here. I'm not even involved with food trucks. But, the reality is, is there's things that are being missed here. They're saying the performance permit is for 12 times per year. That's what it says. Only 12 times that you can use that one.
Thank you. Ken Oplinger?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Ken Oplinger from the chamber. First of all, on behalf of the 800 or so businesses that are members of the chamber, I want to thank staff for the outstanding work over the last several years. They engaged us from the beginning. I would offer to buy the first round this evening, but there's probably some legal issue that prevents me from doing that. But if we're there, no there isn't, all right, then it's on me. It's on me. I did want to specifically, though, talk about the food service parking. I want to thank staff and the Planning Commission for all the time and effort that was spent on that. I think going to 1 to 250 makes a lot of sense. I would take just very tiny exception with the slide that was shown to you, Slide 26, because I'm not sure when there was the information given to us that at 1 to 125, we absolutely meet the demand for every restaurant, but at 1 to 250, we don't meet the demand, which is what the slide said. I think there's a lot of restaurants that at 1 to 125, you are meeting the demand, either because it's a smaller establishment, or I think more importantly, because of all the different ways that we go to restaurants. We don't all drive cars to restaurants, which I think someone mentioned earlier. There's lots of different ways we get there. I think, given the way that we are currently moving around the city, how we're going to move around in the future, 1 to 125 is more than sufficient also for the demand going forward. And so, I would highly encourage you to go ahead and, and approve that the Planning Commission did at 1 to 250. Thank you.
Thank you. Dudley Michael? And then Kurt Huffman. Lee Mulderver had to leave. He set a slip. He just wants to give kudos to staff for all your work. So, there you go. Go ahead. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Madam Mayor, council members. I'm here in support of NZO, also for 1 per 250 seating. I have a small restaurant on Milpla Street. I started my process going through renovation for recommendations that were made to me by Environmental Hall Services, which, as you may know, are very, very nitpicky and very strict. I needed more refrigeration and more cleaning space. I took a small office and storage area and expanded my kitchen into it for a walk-in refrigerator, as well as a, a bigger dish area. That triggered everything in the world. Parking, I mean, I didn't add a balcony. I didn't add par, I didn't add anything else. No seating, no seats, no tables, no dining room. Just a small increased kitchen area for health and safety, and it absolutely has been a nightmare. I know it's a nightmare for staff. It's been a nightmare for me. This clears up a lot of the issues at the 1 per 250. MySpace has been a restaurant since, I think, the late 50s, and was zoned at 1 per 500. So, going down to 1 per 250, the fact that it still works is, is, shows that, that the work that, that staff did, you know, makes a lot of sense and is good for businesses like mine that are non-conforming and that want to make small improvements, whether that's ADA improvements or workers' health and safety improvements. It's not always about adding seats. Sometimes it's about a better work environment. That's it.
Thank you. Kurt Huffman?
Hi, Madam Mayor and council. I'm Kurt Huffman. Thanks to staff, and especially Renee and, and Danny, you know. I'm the one that said I approved it last time at the prior hearing, and I apologize for that and the confusion. I downloaded a version that the file was too big, and I, I thought I was agreeing with something else. So, it's, I read it wrong. My fault. I, I stand by my comment that I submitted to Danny and to you regarding the wording. I was 49 when this hedge moratorium started. I'm 58 now. It's been nine long years watching this hedge ordinance, moratorium, new hedge ordinance, NZO. It's been a long time. There was a lot of public comment. We spent a year on the hedge, public comment, many meetings. I was involved. It was always directly affected. Everybody understood that. It's common sense. What happened was a person who was not affected created the moratorium. We all know that. If you go back to history, that's why we had a moratorium. So, the 300 feet will probably work on notice. I support that. My issue is with abutting properties. Please don't limit anything to abutting properties. There's too many odd lots, whether they're flag lots or triangular lots or, or hillside lots. The, the abutting properties doesn't work because there are spiteful neighbors who will not agree, even with Mr. Sweeney's guidance. They just won't budge. So, we'll need some, please don't limit it to abutting, and, but I, I do applaud everybody's work. I like the 300. Let's get it done. Thanks.
Thank you.
Questions?
Okay. So, you're, Madam Mayor, so you're saying you do like the 300 foot, you, you're, you're willing to give it a go?
I, I agree with the 300 foot, the, the notice. It's still a little confusing in there. There's a wording about abutting in one place.
Basically, you're going from a neighbor who can just have veto power to a public hearing process.
I think that's
I think that's
I think that's the compromise. That's what we tried to do during the public hearing was compromise.
Yep.
And Ms. Stafford agrees? You're, you go, okay, thank you.
And Powell's, and yes, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. All right. To the council, just a clarification. I just looked up, one mile is 5,280 feet. So, you might have misheard. The, the distance between mobile food trucks is 500 feet. So, we're talking about a tenth of a mile. So, just to be clear about that. So, we'll move now to, Ms. Murio, did you want to start?
Well, I did want to ask about retail. Stables is not a food truck. It, you have housewares and some art, art, objects to art, right, for sale. So, do we allow that on private property?
Mr. Cato?
Mayor Snyder, as proposed, Enzo does not, would only allow food and beverage sales.
Okay.
We, we, we knew about Stables. He was one of the people who came to, to the, the meeting that we had in December 2015. I know it was the staff's perspective that, you know, one of the things we liked about foods or mobile food, and one of the reasons we thought it was, was that we wanted to, like, push forward was because, you know, a lot, there are a lot of places in the town where food is not available very close by, and food trucks provide that service, right? As opposed to retail, we just didn't feel like retail was, I don't know, necessary for mobile, for mobile food on private property. Now, it is, there, there's a whole separate effort going on in what the California vehicle code allows in the pub, in the street. So, and as I understand it, that type of vending is allowed in the street. So, we felt that that was enough.
And, and we're not voting on that today, and that is still an issue to be discussed and come back at a future date. So, on the on-street parking for food or any other kind of vending.
Right. That's, that's not what we're talking about. Right. And the Planning Commission agreed with us that, that because this gentleman did come to one of the Planning Commission meetings and, and had public comment of the same type of the Planning Commission, didn't, didn't respond to that, didn't ask us to add retail in. So, we took that as a recommendation to, to keep it as food and beverage sales.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Madam Mayor. I, I wanted to just go back also to congratulate staff and also the committee that worked so hard on this. And Councilmember White was our chair, and the planning commissioners, they, they rotated a little bit. But we had several meetings over a two-year period, and I feel really accomplished having been a part of that. But I, but I would like to say that I was supportive of the neighborhood markets because I live on the West Side where we have two or three near me. And it's just really nice to be able on a hot night to go walk and get some ice cream. Or if you run out of something essential like toilet paper, boom, one block, you got your, your supplies. I guess I understand, you know, how people are talking about the Upper East, you're concerned of, really, Mr. Sweeney, you think someone's going to put a, a 7-Eleven there near the Mission? I think there's rules. But, I guess, I, I, we're going to have that discussion, right? If there's, there's residential areas where they might work, right? Mr. Cato, not...
Councilmember Murio, as far as neighborhood markets go in single-family zones, I, I personally think it's a pretty low probability, low probability land use, right? In order, in my opinion, you have to have enough people around you to make it, to make a neighborhood market work. And low-density single-family just doesn't seem like the right spot. But there are some, but there are some areas where single-family and multifamily share a zone line right there adjacent to each other. And it could be, and there are, there could be locations where it's just better, more convenient, somehow better to be in the single-family side than it is to be in the multifamily side. Maybe that's all, that's what's available. I, so, the, the reason behind the CUP, the reason that Enzo proposes a CUP is because a CUP is a very high standard of review, right? There's public notice, there's in-depth analysis by, by various members of, of staff. There are neighbor, neighbor protection is one of the find, it's not exactly the finding, but compatibility with the neighbors, neighborhood is, is one of the findings. And we find that to be, I, we felt like with the low probability of someone actually applying for one and the high, the high standard requirement for the CUP, you know, we just don't, we just want the opportu, we felt like it would be nice to have the opportunity out there. Not that we thought it was going to be something that we'd actually see necessarily, you know, just pretty rare.
Well, thank you for expanding on that because I think, I think you're right. A low-density area, a, a business person wouldn't put a, a neighborhood market there. It wouldn't, it wouldn't make sense, and it wouldn't make, it wouldn't be profitable. But, I guess, I, I just wanted to let people know how much they're appreciated on the West Side where we can walk and, and get something convenient. And then my comments about the mobile food vendors, I, you know, it's private property, and I think that if the owner wants a, a food truck there, as the gas station at Mitchell Arena in San Andres has Don Paco's truck there. And I know it's more than 90 days a year. So... So, I-
Do you have a number? If I would- You want to throw out?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a number you want to throw out?
Six months.
So 180 days? Okay, I'm just-
Is that about right?
Just trying to figure, yeah, okay. So that would be your suggestion.
They, they are small businesses, as someone has pointed out, and we need to support them. And I, and otherwise, it's really exciting to be at this point, and I hope we pass it today. Thanks.
Before I go into the next person, can, can you actually, I meant to ask before, the issue about the non-residential growth management ordinance and Mr. Goran, yeah, if you can, yeah, respond to those comments.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, the, the current non-residential growth management ordinance, it, it regulates non-residential construction projects, and the new non-residential growth management ordinance also regulates non-residential construction projects. That, the list of the ways you can have a non-residential construction project range from brand-new, non-residential construction all the way through the conversion of existing residential floor area to a non-residential use. And so, the, you, previously, you were regulating those conversions from residential uses to non-residential uses. The new ordinance is doing the same thing. The issue of whether or not a permit is required, or if the permit's listed, the current definition of permit includes development plan. Mr. Goran listed development plan. The uses regarding the conversion of a residential unit to a non-residential use, a hotel use, is a conversion of residential floor area to non-residential floor area. If it's over 1,000 square feet, it requires a development plan. That's equated in the current ordinance as a permit and one of the regulated activities. The same activity is regulated again, the same exemptions occur in the new ordinance. If it's a development plan, if it's less than 1,000 square feet of converted space, it doesn't require a development plan and therefore is excluded from the regulation in the new ordinance as it is today.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank Planning Commission and staff, because they set the table for us really well for the ordinance committee. Very organized, ready to go. We did pull out a couple of issues. One was, of course, the neighborhood markets, and the other one was the limits on the mobile food hours. And in terms of the neighborhood markets, I've gotten a fair amount of correspondence since then, and one thing I realize is, is, as nice it is to have the convenience of neighborhood store or market, you have the sanctity of the neighborhood, you have liquor sales. When the last 7-Eleven, not that there would all be 7-Elevens, but when the last 7-Eleven went on Milpus, a lot of the neighbors were very, very concerned, because even though it wasn't necessarily a residential zone, it was another liquor license near a residential zone, school, school route. So I think that we have to be a little bit sensitive to that. I also think that we need to try to preserve residential neighborhoods as residential neighborhoods, which would bring me over to what is a temporary use of a private lot for a food, a mobile food vendor, and what starts to creep into the permanent. And I think the way staff has set it up right now at 90 days makes sense as a temporary use. I think expanding it beyond that is, is, is a chronic use, is something that would maybe raise the ire of the brick-and-mortar places adjacent, as well as some of the neighbors, because not everybody wants to be in the proximity of the food truck music or not, Madam Mayor. I have to bring that up for you, but hey. So I think that's the way staff has got it teed up is actually the appropriate way to, to look at this. I would not be in favor of expanding that particular use. There certainly are opportunities for private events, for catering, that type of thing that weren't selling to the general public, but something that's vending to the general public unless it's a, if it's a, if it's a permanent use, that's one thing. It's a different set of permits and uses. If it's temporary, then we need to have that, that, that special kind of limit. So I, I like the way staff has it teed up right now. The last thing I was going to mention was on the 1 to 250 parking, which certainly makes it a lot simpler, simpler for staff, certain, simpler for applicants. There has been some outside concern about spreading out these diminished parking, or these eased parking restrictions into other zones that may or may not intensify the use of other neighborhoods that could allow, for example, food service or restaurants. I don't know how possible that really is. I don't know what the market for that is. It's a concern that somebody brought up to me. I thought I'd mentioned it, but I think Planning Commission wrestled with that already, pretty extensively. And like I said, I, I'm very pleased with the way this is teed up so far, as long as we can wrestle down the neighborhood market and the, the food service times for the mobile vendors.
Mr. Dominguez.
I was going to make a motion, but if there's going to be-
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, first of all, this is, this is a monumental event today. It really is. This is, I've been de-riding this zoning ordinance for 20 years. This is the '57 Chevy, one of the really finest-designed vehicles of, of its time that, whose time is no longer here. And I, actually, I'm disappointed with Mr. Cato's version of the old zoning ordinance, because I think I'm thinking about Mr. Limon's, or maybe it even goes back to Don Olson's or something, which had much more black hair growing on it than this. That looks organized and, and, whereas I think of it as more the family bible with tabs and pencil lines on it. And certainly, if you think that thou shalt in, on page one, which allows you to do something, it is thou shalt not in 42 places in the rest of the zoning ordinance. And that's what us as consumers, and I know there's Mr. Goran, and Mr. Higgins as private advocates can, can, with that hat on, can really appreciate how that was, has been a terrible thing for this city for decades. So, this is, this is huge. And also, another piece of this is, this is infrastructure, that the, that the city, right after the crash, that, that the city came up with, and this was a half, over half a million dollars that was invested in this, to take a major institutional piece of, of our city law and bring it up into the 21st century. So that was a, a big commitment, and as you say, Mr. Armstrong got behind it. Obviously, Mr. Casey is too, and that we've pushed this together, and also that we have an A-team in front of us in terms of staff, and legacy team, that we have Mr. Cato here. We expect him to work another 30 years, but in case he doesn't, we, we're grateful that we're able to go forward with this while that, that knowledge is, is here. So I'm, I'm super grateful to, to all of you, all of you, for this coming forward today. So on the specifics, I want, I'll start with the hedges and work backwards into the two other ones. Mr. Huffman, I, I live fairly near Mr. Huffman, and I see this flag lot spite hedge that is really, it's a cartoon. It's literally, this guy's got a road with two, and those hedges were 16, 18 feet high, and very much the purpose was to get rid of private views. And you can imagine, this is a long, this is a, you know, 300, 400-foot driveway, so it took out all, you know, everybody was, lost their views. So this was a, this is a big deal, and I'm really appreciating that we came up with it, with a, with an elegant way to attack this. I do hope, I was, and I'm wondering from, from our attorney, is this an opportunity, is there a way to make a finding in here? You have an eight-foot hedge. There's a lot of private views that are maintained, and I don't want anything over that, that eight-foot hedge getting in the way of a private view on a discretionary basis. Is there a way to get that into the conversation for this discretionary process? That somebody doesn't want an eight-foot, the hedge to go to 14 feet, because it would affect their private view? Is this an opportunity where this could be done legally?
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, the, we have been careful not to have such definitive statements. Essentially, I mean, I, the finding that I'm hearing Councilmember White speak of, are you saying that it just shall not go above eight feet? Because then-
No, no. We have this discretionary process, because there's also, and Mr., we lost Mr. Sweeney, that's too bad, because he's very much, we have places where 14, 18-foot hedges are good. They may make a lot of sense, and certainly that Upper East, you'll see it all over the place where that, that privacy is, is, is improved by very high hedges. But I just, I'm looking for those, and you want that discretionary process. Okay, that's good there and it's bad there. So we want to, we want to lock that in. But the private view, I, I think is, and we have that consideration as part of the discussion, it, it would be good, in my view, and I'm just, I'm running that by Mr. Vincent to see whether there's options to do that or not.
Well, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, I remind the council that we do have the view dispute ordinance-
I understand.
-that is, that was specifically created so that, to address the particular situation you're talking about, where a private view is being impacted by vegetation growth on a neighboring parcel. And the council at that time had considered that that was a private issue between two property owners that lived adjacent to one another, and that it really didn't amount to a community-wide interest in, in the, to create a separate finding. And so, again, that, that was a prior council that had that particular solution to that issue. The, you know, sitting here right now, I, I wouldn't want to step out in front of staff and make a recommendation one way or the other as far as a different solution. We, we worked, I was working in the office at that time, I worked on the view dispute ordinance with Mr. Wiley, and that was the mouse, that was the best mousetrap we found at that time. If we wanted to create a new mousetrap, I'd recommend that that's a bigger project than today.
Okay. Well, as I say, I, I think that this is an opportunity, and I'm not, certainly not going to die on that hill today, but that to have a finding that, that deals with private, that gives consideration to private views on hedges in this discretionary process, I think is a, is a valid way to go. And it's, it, again, having experienced this amazing spite hedge in, in our, in our neighborhood, I can see how this could be helpful to a lot of people. Okay, so now moving, and I'm hearing Mr. Vincent being uncomfortable with that finding, joining things at this point. So we have the, the neighborhood markets and the mobile food vendors. On the neighborhood markets, I can see the benefit of this being limited to multifamily zones as one way as a compromise. So we start, and the geography, I'm trying to think of, you know, trying to picture our city, and where would there be an R1 area where a, a neighborhood market would be appropriate, besides a catty corner from the Mission? Or perhaps, I was thinking that, that filter building at the Sheffield Reservoir would be a really nice place for a neighborhood market as well. And I, and I think 1,500 feet, you, you know, they, they would end up with the food service out there, and I, I think they would be busy, they could be busy places at certain times. So I, I think one way to attack it might be to go with the multi, you know, you go with R2 to R4 zones, that might be one way to attack the neighborhood markets. I, I too share the, the desire to nurture those, the ones that are there, and not have it be that they get, they get stuck with, you know, they're trying to do what the, the gentleman was talking about with his restaurant, where he has to put in a freezer box and then ends up, you know, getting stuck with a whole bunch of non-, you know, getting caught in the, in the, in the morass. You want those legacy operations to, to be able to flow with, with progress over time. So that's the essence of, of my hope for the, for the neighborhood markets, and maybe the, the multifamily zone would, would be a compromise that, that could work for everybody. On the mobile food vendors, I, what I'm not seeing here is, this is, mobile food vendors on private property, that is residential, commercial, no matter what. Is that the case? It's just commercial?
Just commercial.
Okay. All right, that helps. I probably, I, I come down on, it's sort of in the area of Mr. Rouse's orientation of that. I think the number of days is reasonable, and then we bump up to a higher intensity of, of review if we want more than the, than the 90 days. And it's, the, the, the first level is performing, there's land use permit, and then there's performance review, which is the, a very low level of discretionary permit. It's not a conditional use permit, and I think that makes, makes good sense. The, just a, by the way, comment on the, I think the parking, the loosening the parking for the restaurants and such is, to bring all of these different standards into, into a single one makes, makes good sense. So otherwise, it's staff, you know, gosh, this is a really an exciting day, and I, I expect we're going to get an approval out of this, and congratulations to you for, for grinding on this and getting this, to this point.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Planning Commission, what did you all say about the neighborhood markets?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, we struggled with that, and it came down to, as planners, we can see a light at the end of the tunnel to try to appease all interest. So in the case where it was a neighborhood compatibility issue, there's a discretionary action, which can involve maybe an extended environmental review process to analyze noise or visual effects or even traffic that are associated with such a, a project. And if, if in the event an applicant did come forward for something that was not popular with a neighborhood because of its low density, you know, from a market standpoint, we just didn't think that was, you know, likely, as Mr. Cato indicated, but if in fact that happened, there's, there's a procedure for that. Design review, scrutiny by planning staff and, and the Planning Commission, you know, certainly an, an extended environmental review process could occur too.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Well, I, I know you said there's a low probability of, of a neighborhood market in residential, but I'm, I'd like to make zero probability in the R1, so, but when, I think what Mr. White suggests is, is a good compromise, and practically speaking, you'd have to be in a greater density than R1 to make a, a market work in any case. So I'd just rather close the door now than have people in Sammercand or San Roque read the news tomorrow and say, God, we may have a market next to us, which, you know, is unlikely, but would be possible if we went forward like this. So I would take that off the map entirely, and I hope my colleagues will agree. The one thing, I, I kind of understand what Ms. Murio was saying about the, the truck that she's talking about, but I think that to open it to half a year, which is what you were suggesting, instead of 90 days, 180 days, really walks through the, across the threshold of temporary into permanent. And we haven't spoken much about other brick-and-mortar restaurants that, you know, have a real challenge anyway. I think that to some degree, these trucks, which will, may proliferate, certainly could, threaten our existing restaurants, and I'd like to protect them as much as possible. So I'm sorry, Kathy, I, I don't go along with the 180, but I will go over and try the taco over there sometime real soon. I think that's it. So ultimately, I guess I could make a motion now that we go forward with the modifications of no small markets in the, in the R1 zones, and that would be it. Everything else is fine by me.
So staff recommendation with that, one change. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Rouse seconds it. Okay. I, first, I want to thank the, the Enzo Committee. I, I definitely did not volunteer to be on that, because I knew it was going to be a lot of hours. I, I figure I went through my stuff through the NPO when I first started, and I, and I went through that, and that was fantastic, and I, so I- I went through that, and that was fantastic, and I, so I wished you well, and, no, I know it's a lot of work, and obviously, going through the planning commission and all the staff, and it took about the same amount of time, I think, for, for these two things. And, and it's going to be a very big difference, I hope, for people going through the planning process of just clarity, not getting through all this non-conforming things, you're reducing the, the review period, you know, we've been hearing how anti-business the city can be sometimes. And, and with an antiquated zoning ordinance, it's complicated, some things come up, and Jared Gordon's been in my office with some of his clients on restaurants and seating, and you go through, and you want to pull your hair out, and, you know. So, having this process, as long as it took, it was important to do. And I think certainly the 250 square feet per one parking space is going to make a huge difference in all parts of, of the city. So, and, and I'm, I'm quite disappointed that food truck owners are not here. I had invited some of them who had called me out on Twitter to, to, to meet, and they said they would, and then they never made the appointment. I was listening to what they had to say, but frankly, just so much bad information out there that really, I think, clouded the, the reality of what it is we were trying to do. So, I'm hoping that, moving forward, that the media that, you know, used this seemingly controversy of trying, that we're looking to restrict something when actually we're allowing something, can clarify that and understand that the issue about on-street vending is still happening, that, that nothing is being decided upon that today, and so we still have that opportunity. And so, I, I will still listen to what their concerns are as we move forward on that issue. But I know this takes a five-vote supermajority as a minimum. I know you keep asking for seven. It's good, you keep asking. So, I, you know, I was, I was willing to play a little bit with the number of days. I actually was looking at four hours as maybe being too little. I was thinking six hours, just because of setup time if there's an event, but, so I'll, I'll push for a six-hour maximum instead of a four, but I think people are pretty solid, unless something changes. And I might just sing really softly when I ask for my taco, and that's okay. The taco place on, on San Andres and Mitchell-Torino has a really good soap base as well, if you really want to look at that. But I think, just to, to get to Ms. Mario's point, and I think it's a good one, there is, if there wasn't a process for it, I'd probably push a little more for more days. But because there's a performance permit process, then there is a way for those vendor food trucks in certain areas to be able to do well more than 90 days. And, and that has a hearing, and people want to see it happen, and that can easily work, and it happens once, right? Did we answer that question? They don't have to do this every, every year? Or does it just happen once? Every so often?
The CUP allows multi-year. The performance standard permit is only for, only for the year, though.
Okay. So, they would have to, all right, well, you know, that may be into the future, as we're looking into the on-street stuff, maybe that's something we could look into in the future. But at least for now, it's giving an option for more than 90 days in certain parts. And, and I'm fine with limiting markets to the multifamily. I, I go half a block away from my place when I run out of milk in the morning, and that's really handy for me, so, but that will still be an option for those in multifamily places, which is where I am anyway. So, let's just, for now, take that off the table, if that's okay. All right, Mr. Dominguez, you have not spoken yet.
So, I guess I might be the only one who would want to leave the opening for some type of business in the R1s. Again, just because if the neighbors want it, that's the only way it's going to go in, because if the neighbors don't want it, it's not going to succeed, and people are going to waste a lot of money. I think the, the climate for retail is tough enough, as evidenced by some of the vacancies and Amazon shipping stuff to people's doors every day. But if the, if the possibility was there to create employment in these areas and give people the option to, to reduce their vehicle miles traveled, I'd love to see us take advantage of that. And I think we could put in the controls and regulations that would protect quality of life. The, I want to echo everyone's comments on staff. Thank you for devoting yourselves to this and being committed. I came in a, a year and a half ago, so I didn't have to sit and watch and help you guys do this or tell you guys to do this, but I definitely appreciate the efforts regarding the, the mobile food vendors. I think this is a good starting point, but I think there's room for making some changes down the line if we see that it's not working. What I'd like to encourage is, is more use of pop-ups, because we do have all these vacancies. There are web apps and websites in other communities where entrepreneurs can be matched to open spaces. So, it would allow someone, maybe who couldn't even afford a mobile food truck, to actually go into a restaurant that's not being used on a certain day or certain time. So, we saw that, for example, with Corazon Cantina at Three Pickles, and now they have their, their own full-fledged restaurant at the public market. So, that's a, a good example. So, I'd love for the city, or the chamber, or downtown organization to really promote something like that, or the commercial realtors to really push a system to match up our, our entrepreneurs with spaces that are available, because right now, we have a lot of capacity.
Ms. Mario.
So, Madam Mayor, you, you did confirm that if a mobile food vendor wants to be there long, more than 90 days, there's a process.
Correct.
Is that, the staff was just looking like they were looking at their papers?
Yeah, they just have to renew that process every year right now. And if we wanted to extend that later, we can make that determination.
And it's not a CUP?
Correct.
It's the performance?
Right.
I would just hate to not vote for the, since it's all one big package here.
Yeah.
One more question, ma'am. Do, do we get complaints about the taco trucks and the, the food trucks? Do, I mean, are, are we regulating something that, that doesn't need regulation if people like them and there's no complaints?
Councilmember Mario, we, we do get complaints for mobile food trucks.
Okay.
And I think we're working on one right now in sort of the Upper Delavina area. And, and it is a concern to the neighbors that's, you know, noisy and smelly, and they're there all the time, and, you know, so there's, there's definitely a neighbor perspective to this as well.
So, residents are complaining, or other businesses are complaining?
Yes, no, no, the residents, residents.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Dominguez.
So, I guess I will ask for clarification then on this, on page 3, 240, section 3, page 240. Temporary uses requiring a conditional use permit, G2. A conditional use permit is required for any temporary use that will occur on the same site more than 12 times per year, or that will occur over multiple years.
Yes, that's, that's correct. But if you also look at the previous page, 3, 239, F1J.
Hold on, F1J?
It's, it's the previous page, 3, 239.
Okay.
And so, we haven't, we haven't come up with the implementing policies for how this is going to work, because we weren't sure what was going to happen at council, right? But the idea is that if, so, mobile food vendors, that's not, that's, that's J instead of D, right? It's a different, it's a different spot in the, different spot in the ordinance. And the idea is that those would be allowed more than 12 times a year. Obviously, you're allowed 90 times a year without a performance standard permit, right? So, the idea is you will be able to do more and have more vehicle, more trucks in a certain spot if you wanted, or more, or more time. And, but at a certain point, it's going to, it's going to migrate over to the conditional use permit, right? Before, I think I said, if someone wanted to have a, a spot with 10 mobile food trucks in one spot, that would probably kick it into the conditional use permit, right? If they wanted to be there 365 days a year, that'd probably be a conditional use permit. We just haven't, we, because we weren't sure what was going to happen here, we haven't spent any time yet determining what the difference would be. But, but, but that's, but that's our plan.
Okay, so G2 does not apply to mobile food vendors?
No, it, it does and it doesn't. I mean, it's, it'll depend on this, it will depend on, very much on the scope of what's proposed. That's not the clarity I was looking for.
Sorry.
But, Mr. Vincent, do you have any, any observations on G2?
Well, Madam Mayor, members of council, I'd say that G2 does not apply to food vendors. However, it leaves open a question, and, you know, Mr. Cato is explaining, kind of from the negative, of they don't know where that dividing line is yet. One, one approach to, to subsection G on page 240 would be to add a third category, which is food vending applications that do not qualify for a performance standard permit. You know, it's, again, it's backing into what requires a CUP. You have the standards for food vending that are allowed by right, that's up to 90 days in, in this particular, the duration. The performance standard permit, staff is, is needing to decide how far, what would be the potential allowances under a performance standard permit. And then, that would create the new dividing line as to what would need to be considered for a conditional use permit. So, if you wanted to add one provision that would address the dividing line for, between performance standard permit and CUP, I would recommend a, a G3, that would be any food vending application that does not qualify for a performance standard permit.
Okay. Maybe we can tackle this when we deal with on-street mobile food vendors.
Okay. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I'm not clear on where the one-year maximum is located on the performance standard permit. Do all performance standard permits can only be issued for one year? It seems to me there have been performance standard permits that have been issued indefinitely on certain little things. So, I'm just opening that up to say, is there a way to, for you to at least be massaging that? You're coming back with implementation stuff. Why not look at performance standards for, you know, longer than one year, as, as part of what then you're going to work on?
Yes, we will do that, yes.
Okay. So, that's, we're not nailed down to one year, you guys are going to come back with more stuff?
So, to be clear, for mobile food vending, once on private property, once more than 90 days, they can have a performance standard permit, of which those details still need to come back to us.
And it might be for longer than one year.
And it might be for longer than one year.
At least, running that by Ms. Mario, at least has one more piece of flexibility that could occur.
Yes.
Okay. All right. We know we're doing? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Good job, everyone. You got what you asked for. All right. Thanks. All right. Any council member committee assignment reports? Ms. Mario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My intern and I today attended the Festivals and Events Committee Grant Proposal Interviews, and I learned a lot about the good people and organizations that the city gives arts grants to, namely, the Lobero Theater, the Symphony Orchestra, for instance. I also attended the pre-Fiesta Tea this weekend along with the mayor. We had a good time, didn't we? That's put on by the Native Daughters of the Golden West, Reyna Del Mar Parlor Number 126. And it's one of the early Fiesta events, and it was beautiful, dancing and music and tea. I'd like to congratulate David Stone for continuing Take Back the Park, which is an annual event reminding people that the grassy area in front of the Fest Parker Hotel is a public park, or public park space, rather. And then, I attended the Community Action Commission hearing last week, and it was Fran Foreman's last meeting. And she's got a new job, and Tony Mitchell of her staff is the interim executive director. It was also the meeting where we meet with the Policy Council of the Head Start Preschool Program, and those, our parents are recruited to take leadership roles in the, in the operations of that Head Start Preschool Program. And so, it's just lovely. We have dinner at Peasoup Anderson's, and I just congratulate Fran on her new adventures. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
A week ago, Fourth of July parade. It was great. And I walked back after we'd finished and saw some of the other things. There was just a lot of interesting stuff going on, so. That parade always makes me feel good, and I thank all of you for, who were there, for joining us.
Absolutely. Mr. Dominguez.
This is more related to the fire, but I just wanted to report, I spoke with Michael Baker, who runs the Boys and Girls Club in Camp Woodyers, their facility, and they lost a few structures, but most of the structures were saved. They had done some significant fire abatement earlier in the year, and that really helped preserve the, the integrity of their, of their property, and that was according to the fire marshal. So, just a word to the wise, do fire abatement now.
Yeah. First, to thank our local fire crews who have been helping mutual aid with, with the, with the local fire, the Woodyer Fire in particular. And with the Fourth of July, I was down at Cabrillo for the fireworks, and the amount of people down there, I hadn't been down there in a couple of years, and it was tremendous going under the freeway, and I knew the Mesa and Milpus and, you know, just the number of people there. But the next morning, John Palmentary, because he emcees the local bands, and there's, it's fun, and, you know, before the fireworks starts, he texted me, unfortunately, at 7:30 in the morning, but, you know, saying, "Look, the beach is all nice and clean." It looked like no one was there the day before. So, it was just really quite astonishing. Last Friday, I had the opportunity to take a tour of the new direct relief construction site, and with Thomas Tug and, and some of his team. It's, really, the walls are about to come up the end of the month, they were pouring concrete, and it's a big facility, I mean, we knew that already, but it's going to be really helpful for them and for Direct Relief's mission to consolidate all of their spaces. And they hope to be in by the end of the calendar year. That's the goal. So, it was, I appreciate what they were doing. With that, we have a closed session. If you could read number 18.
Item 18, subject, Public Employee Performance Evaluation, Government Code, Section 54957, as described in Agenda Item Number 18.
Thank you, and we will adjourn from there. Thank you very much.